Okay, thank you for coming tonight for our special meeting of the city council. Looks like we have a full house here tonight. To consider matters, we're meeting today to be considered matters related to the private cannabis retail stores in the city of Brampton. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be considered at this special meeting. All members of council are present this evening. I remind everyone that this meeting, to please ensure your cellphones, other electronic devices are off so we can hear everyone's input on this important topic. Our first item is the approval of the agenda. And we have a motion moved by councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Dillon, to approve the agenda. Additional information related to this evening's meeting was distributed at your seats. I will ask the clerk to introduce this additional material.
Mayor Jeff, sorry, Mayor Brown, members of council, my apologies. The following additional changes to the agenda have been identified and on members' desks. Item 3.1, there is a staff presentation from Joe Patari, Acting Chief Administrative Officer and Commissioner of Corporate Services, entitled "Legalization of Recreational Cannabis in Canada: Private Cannabis Retail Stores in the City of Brampton." Also, in regard to items that were on the published agenda. Item 4.2, which is a memorandum from the Acting Chief Administrative Officer. There is a supplementary appendix with additional public feedback received by the city in regard to this matter. And in addition to the material that is before you in the supplementary appendix, as of 6 o'clock this evening, there were seven additional emails received. Six not in favor of opting in, and one in favor of opting in. In regard to item 5.3, which is correspondence from Mayor Brown to Brampton MPs and MPPs, there is reply letters that have been received by the city. First is from Sonia Sedu, Member of Parliament for Brampton South. Second is from Ruby Sahota, Member of Parliament for Brampton North. Third is from Raj Graywall, Member of Parliament for Brampton East. Fourth is from Kamal Kara, Member of Parliament for Brampton West. Additionally, from Prabmeet Singh Sarkarara, Member of Provincial Parliament from Brampton South. From Sarah Singh, Kevin Yard, and Guritan Singh, Members of Provincial Parliament for Brampton Centre, Brampton North, and Brampton East. And finally, from Amarjot Sandhu, Member of Provincial Parliament from Brampton West. In addition, in regard to the delegations listed for this evening's meeting, item delegation 3.2-6 from Brett Bell, representing Fire and Flower, that delegation request has been withdrawn. Also, in regard to delegation 3.2-2 from Skylar Roberts, there is a copy of the presentation attached on members' desks. As well, I should point out, there are some additional delegations that have been received for tonight's meeting. So delegation 3.2-7 is from Aloha Donor, the Tobago Creek Residents Association. 3.2-8 from Anna Marie Carrero, Brampton resident. 3.2-9, Richard Blake, Brampton resident. 3.2-10 from Nielsen Gonzalez, owner and franchiser Culture Rising. 3.2-11 from Akin Oduntan, Bramley Church of God. Delegation 3.2-12 from Yolanda Slater, entrepreneur. And delegation 3.2-13 from Ryan Elcott, Brampton resident. In addition, and not listed on your published changes, members of council, there have been three additional delegation requests received since the start of the meeting. Item 14 from Andrew de Groot. Delegation 15 from Roger Stewart. And delegation 16 from Marouf Weahl. In addition, we have some correspondence. Correspondence item 5.1-1 from the Brampton Chinese Baptist Church. There is an additional petition sheet that has been distributed to members of council. And additional correspondence received after the publication of the agenda. 5.1-4, Ganesh Shankar, Brampton resident. And then 5.1-5 from Ishta Mercurio Wentworth, a Brampton resident. And Mr. Mayor, those are the changes that the clerk's office is aware of at this time.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. I would note that the letter that my office circulated to MPs and MPPs was based on the council meeting last week, where I received instruction from council that we, given the fact that this legislation imposed upon us is from upper levels of government, to see if they wanted to offer any guidance to city council on this decision. We use the same language that was utilized in the legislation. If there was no position taken, that would be interpreted as support the same way the legislation has treated municipalities. And so, we appreciate the fact that we now have clarity over where all the MPPs and MPs stand. Thank you for the description. We now have a motion, just to repeat, this is from councillor Williams and councillor Dillon, that the agenda for the special council meeting of January 21st, 2019 be approved as published and circulated. All in favor? Motion carries. Declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Do any members have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? If you have a license for a cannabis shop, please don't participate. I think that's the general message. Are there any conflicts of interest, so the clerk can note for the meeting minutes? Seeing none. Now, we have delegations, but I see there's a few members who have requested to speak. Councillor Santos first.
Yes. Thank you through you, Chair. I realize that there are a number of delegations coming forward. I think it's important for us to respect that and also make sure that we only direct questions during those delegations when the time comes. But I also wanted to say that I have a motion that I wanted to bring forward immediately after.
Okay. So, and that's correct, we're not receiving motions at this time until after the delegations, but we will accept your motion at that time.
Thank you.
They just are addressed to all council members. This, the delegations is not an opportunity for debate. You'll have an opportunity to share your perspectives on this. It's only for questions pertaining to the presentation. So, on that note, we have a staff presentation from, a presentation item 3.1 regarding the legalization of recreational cannabis in Canada: Private Cannabis Retail Stores in the City of Brampton. Joe Patari, our ACN CO, is here to provide counsel with a presentation as context for this evening's meeting. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Your worship, respected members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen in attendance here and online. It is my absolute privilege to stand here this evening as part of this special council meeting where a decision will finally be made on Brampton opting in or out of private cannabis retail sales. In December 2018, on the 5th, we presented an evidence-based report along with some substantial public engagement and a recommendation to this council. With greatest respect and wisdom, you directed us to further educate, inform, and engage our community for this important decision. And did we ever. In doing so, I can say Brampton completed the most democratic, dynamic, and exhaustive engagement more than any other municipality on this important matter, whereby anyone and everyone virtually had an opportunity to participate. Hence, I want to thank the staff's efforts for the hundreds of hours to make this happen, including giving up their holidays over the Christmas break, as well as weekends, to support the community we serve. So for that, I thank you. I want to not go over the detail I provided in December, rather just focus on some of the substantial updates and changes to get to the delegates themselves, as well as this important debate. Just as a reminder, this was always an important issue to us back when it was originally tabled. We proactively engaged the provincial government since the federal government first introduced the Cannabis Act in the spring of 2017. We had multiple meetings with the Ministry of Finance, as well as the Ministry of the Attorney General, to state our important position in terms of if it was going to be legalized, what was really important to us, as well as reflecting back some of the concerns from Peel Public Health, as well as Peel Regional Police on this important matter. There was constructive collaborative dialogue throughout that process. It has been really important to us back then, as it is now. We provided regular staff updates to council on this matter through our government relations and support from Lowell Ruben Vaughn. We had our detailed report and findings on December 5th. And we had our, as you know, the robust Have You Say public engagement campaign, including dedicated website, brampton.ca/cannabis, as well as the dedicated email address of cannabis@brampton.ca. Staff conducted public engagement and activities in preparation for that December 5th, as I noted, as well as the number of events since then, I'll get into that detail later. Again, as a reminder, whether you opt in or opt out, there is no debate. Cannabis was legalized by the federal government. Today, anyone 19 years of age or older in the province of Ontario can purchase and use recreational cannabis. It can be purchased legally right now online, and as of April 1st, 2019, there'll be brick and mortar stores across the province where it can also be purchased. And as a reminder, hence the timing for our meeting, ensuring that we have every opportunity to engage our community, by 11:59 PM tomorrow, if we're opting out as a community, we need to indicate to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario registrar in writing our council resolution saying we're opting out. If they do not receive that written confirmation by that deadline, by default, as a municipality, they will recognize us as opting in. So, in terms of update, in terms of private retail stores and the licensing model, given the cannabis shortage, the province of Ontario capped temporarily the number of private retail store licenses to 25. Six are being allocated to the GTA region, which includes Durham, York, Peel, and Halton region. Five in Toronto, five in the eastern part of the province, two in the north, and seven in the west. On the 11th of January of this year, the AGCO put in place a lottery, which was overseen by a fairness monitor from KPMG. The results of that lottery are on the AGCO website. And at this time, there is no indication when those additional licenses beyond the 25 will be permitted. There is some documentation to suggest that the 25 licenses will likely be in place for approximately a two-year period. Since our December 5th, our Have Your Say public education outreach included our website, which had a thousand, over a thousand unique views on the brampton.ca/cannabis homepage, which we had detailed documentation and information available, including a number of our presentations. We had nearly 2,000 unique views to our Have Your Say webpage. In terms of advertising, we heard you. We pushed more out, including ensuring that our ethnic media was also leveraged. We also used Brampton TV network, including city-owned facilities, to publicize our engagement activities, in addition to streaming aspects of our town hall and the presentations provided by myself at that town hall, as well as our public health partners, to again, every opportunity to educate the public at any given time. We leveraged our social media, including using Facebook Live for our town hall, which was used very well. We had our email address. Our 311 centre received 135 calls related to inquiring about additional information about cannabis between October 1st, 2018, and January 20th, 2019. So, prior to our December 5th meeting, we did a scientifically valid research survey conducted by Environics between November 1st and 4th. We also did an online poll with, between October 30th and November 9th. In addition, beyond our, that, we heard you. We did intercept interviews. We went out to our communities with translated information in multiple languages. We had teams of staff going out to our Brampton libraries, such as Gore Meadows and Chinkoozie Branch. We went out to Cassie Campbell, our Brampton Soccer Centre, Ernst Cliff Recreation Centre, Gore Meadows Community Centre and Library, Chinkoozie Wellness Centre, Flower City Senior Centre, and our South Fletcher's Sports Complex, as well as Century Gardens Recreation Centres. We went out to the people. We received 768 intercept interviews through that engagement, reaching out to our community. We had a town hall that was attended by over 150 residents. It was an amazing night and dialogue. We also did a tele-town hall with over 8,500 attendees on that call for the majority of that hour. Many of you have asked, what are the estimated costs? If you leverage the formula used by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, or FCM, they estimate the cost for municipal administration to be between $750,000 and $1.5 million, and a further $2.25 million to $3.25 million for policing per municipality size of 500,000. So applying that methodology alone, the administration cost would be anywhere between $900,000 and $1.8 million, annually shared between us and the region of Peel. The policing, in addition to that, would be, so that would, so the administration piece would include Peel Public Health as part of that $900,000 and $1.8 million range. The policing aspect would be between $6.3 and $9 million annually for both Peel Regional Police and OPP, so Mississauga, Brampton, and Calladen. So recognizing that Peel Regional Police, that would probably be 80% of that number when you look at the populations of Brampton and Mississauga. Again, those, that's based on the formula by the FCM. If you look at the report put out by the Medical Officer of Health at the region of Peel, they estimate their cost to be approximately $500,000, not including any additional requirements under the Smoke Free Ontario Act, and if they start to limit places of use, those numbers could go up. Peel Regional Police are still quantifying those costs. And in terms of our city costs, we're ranging between $360,000 and $500,000. It's going to depend on the number of calls and requirements we need. So how much money is available to us? So if you recall, there's three buckets of one-time funding available to municipalities. That first $15 million bucket was allocated to municipalities. We actually received our first payment to the region of Peel and the city of Brampton. We were allocated $440,000, which we split 50/50. So into the city of Brampton was $220,000. Then the second bucket is available primarily to those who opt in. If we opt out, we're limited to receiving out of that second $15 million, $5,000. If we opt in, we would get a minimum of another $220,000. We're also eligible to receive contingency funding, which is that last bucket of $10 million. And most important, we'd be eligible to share the 50% of the surplus funding of the province's share of the federal excise tax on cannabis sales that exceed $100 million in the first two years. This payment for us could range between $147,000 to $735,000 annually. So as a whole, the range that could be for us, based on a series of assumptions, which I'll detail in a moment, would range between about $742,000 to upwards of $2.9 million. Why the wide range? The province has limited the number of licenses to municipalities over 50,000 in population. Of the 444 municipalities in the province of Ontario, approximately 40 or so have populations over 50,000. Hence, our proportion of that pie, if they're going to allocate all the funding, significantly increases. Number two, if you were to base the decision, as the province is indicating, your access to that funding if you opt in, the number of those who opt out, again, increases potentially our proportion of that pie. That then also applies to that federal share of that excise tax funding, hence that large range. And to be clear, that $742 to $2.9 million is Brampton's share. The region of Peel would also get that additional funding if we opt in. Regardless of tonight's decision, I want to, I want to let everyone know that long-term funding model, we will continue to advocate the province for a long-term funding model to ensure municipalities can recover all our costs. We know that whatever's provided to us won't necessarily be enough, but we are going to record our costs, cost drivers, and ensure we have that business case to go after any of those additional costs, to ensure whatever we're spending, we're going to try and recoup that, and we will advocate for that. We'll also look for the ability to impose further restrictions, regardless of site locations and buffers around other sensitive land use areas in addition to schools. Because currently, right now, the only limiting factor is that 150-meter distance from schools. So last, before I end and turn it over to the delegates, just a reminder, our position has not changed from staff. Our recommendation that's here before you today from December 5th is that given the findings from our statistical analysis, public feedback, the provincial funding formula, increased enforcement, and the fact that legal recreational cannabis is readily available for purchasing online, and that won't change, and the costs associated to that will not change, we are advising council or recommending council to opt in or to not opt out and allow private retail cannabis sales stores to operate in Brampton.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I noticed we have a number of councillors with questions. We'll start off with councillor Fortini.
Sir, thank you through the mayor. I think councillor Santos wanted to go first, so I'll let her speak first.
Okay, councillor, councillor Mederos.
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you, Joe, for the presentation. There's an aspect I thought very important, when you talk about all the public engagement. One thing that's come clear to me is that there still seems to be misinformation, not understanding the whole, I guess, legislative framework around it. There's the one aspect that is legalized. And I often get questioned about where can people smoke, how do we regulate it? So what it tells me, and I'm not sure if the findings during your consultations can verify it, that people, there's a lot of still public education that's required. And would you say through the chair, that some of the funds that we receive will go towards that public education aspect? Notwithstanding the fact the region has a responsibility, but I think from the city's perspective, because that seems to what I keep, I keep hearing is, if, you know, I'm at a park, someone's doing it, I'm with my child, what recourse do I have? How do we stop them, where can they smoke it?
Through you, your worship. Councillor Mederos, you know, you raise an excellent point, and we have a fiduciary to do that as a municipality. Our enforcement and bylaw services team, in partnership with Fire and our Building Division and our licensing team, we have an obligation to ensure that that educational awareness aspect does continue in partnership with Peel Public Health, as well as our Peel Regional Police in terms of where it can be consumed, where it cannot be consumed, and the recourse is to that. That information is also available on our website and has been for many months. But we will continue to push that messaging 100%.
And I guess through the chair, I would imagine, very simple, this does put required resources. So when we talk about the funding, it's not simply the enforcement aspect. It's also for public education, and also for the fact that we need staff resources to give attention to this.
Through you, your worship, that is exactly correct. Some of those cost estimates that I had indicated included both for strategic communications, our 311, fire and emergency services enforcement, as well as our security team, who also do patrols in our parks and along our trails.
Thank you.
Councillor Williams.
Thank you through you, mayor. The promise of funding, this is in regards to the 25 stores that they're, the province is starting to roll out first. So, the promise of funding cannot possibly be filled with just 25 stores. So how many stores need to be operating in order to get the full funding back?
Through you, your worship, the money, so that first payment, that $15 million, went to all municipalities regardless of opt-in or opt-out. And they've been, the province has been very clear, if you want additional funding to offset the enforcement costs for policing, public health education, and how they want to spend those dollars, as well as the municipal administration costs, the opting in provides you access to that. They never mentioned anything limiting to 25 or any number of stores.
So, just for clarification, they're, they're only doing 25 stores for two years. And it's my understanding that after a year, we should be getting a percentage of the revenue, right? So how can that revenue be supported with just 25 stores?
Through the chair, that's based on the federal formula across the country and meeting targets of that $100 million surplus.
Councillor Blessie.
So I realize many councillors may have questions of clarification and other questions, but I think that for the benefit of the public, I think we should be hearing from the delegates. And I think we should hold our even questions of clarifications until after the, we hear the presentations and the delegations before us.
Thank you, councillor Blessie. Councillor Williams.
I'm, thank you.
Councillor Singh.
Keep it to one sentence, and I just wanted to thank staff for all the consultation.
Well, councillor Blessie, you had a positive effect on the conversation. I just want to recognize, I see that we have with us MPP Sarah Singh and MPP Kevin Yard. Thank you for your interest in this debate. So I have a motion from, a motion from councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Singh, that the staff presentation from Joseph Patari, Acting Chief Administrative Officer and Commissioner of Corporate Services, to the special council meeting of January 21st, 2019 be received. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our next item is delegations. Item 3.2, Private Cannabis Retail Stores in the City of Brampton. We have a number of delegations today. And just once again, to remind those making delegations, and for those asking questions, this is not about the legalization of cannabis. That has already, that's already been completed by the government of Canada. That is not the discussion today. This is whether we should have a retail store in Brampton, as per the provincial legislation that requires us to opt in by January 22nd. And given, if I can clarify with the clerk, how much time is allocated for each presentation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, five minutes per delegation.
Five minutes per delegation, and I am going to hold all the delegations to that time limit, given the large amount of interest we have in making a deputation. So first up, we have Jackson Coffey, Brampton resident. Jackson, if you'd like to come forward? Okay, Jackson is not here. So we'll go to the next person on the list, Skylar Roberts, head moderator, Brampton subreddit.
All right, and I've prepared a little presentation. All right, so it's pretty simple. I think reducing crime, opt-in. So I'm the head moderator of the Brampton subreddit, and, you know, I am kind of a young person, which you guys probably don't see too many at city council meetings. But I moderate a online forum in which there is about 4,000 members, and a large portion of them are under 40, or in the kind of 20 to 40 crowd. So we did a online poll or survey. We had about 1,000, or just under 1,000 votes. This was kind of in response to councillor Williams's poll that she did on Facebook, in which she had, I believe, a little over 900 votes. And we kind of found opposite findings. And you can actually see, I have the link at the bottom, and which roughly three-quarters voted in favor of allowing cannabis stores in Brampton. Now, I feel that they sort of cancel each other out, the two polls. I think we should go with what the city staff recommended. So I just used the basic figure of roughly $1 million for policing and cannabis funding in general, but as was previously stated, it could be anywhere from $743,000 to $2.9 million. And we won't receive that if we opt in later. The overall effect would be a decrease in, you know, the justice system and, you know, policing costs related to cannabis. Organ, for example, I am... Oregon, for example, I am American, so I'm going to pull from the states, Oregon, which legalized marijuana, I believe, five years ago, saw a 10%, 10% decrease in violent crimes and a 13% decrease in homicides. Washington DC, which legalized four years ago, saw a 98% decrease in cannabis arrests and an 85% decrease in cannabis possession and charges. So it's pretty significant. And since we are starting off with only one, maybe two stores, that's a lot easier to manage, and we'll have all that additional funding, as opposed to not having the greater majority of that funding and no stores, it's still roughly the same problem. Think of the children. Youth can currently buy cannabis in high schools right now, so it's essentially like having a zero-meter minimum distance for cannabis. So 150 meters is definitely an improvement. You must prove your age to enter a cannabis store. I actually had an experience with that in Washington state a couple of years ago. I was underage, and so I was not allowed to enter the store. And there's also some very steep fines, you can lose your license, and up to 14 years in jail for selling to minors or those under 19. So it's in every, you know, cannabis store's best interest not to sell to children and to be very certain of it. It reduces gang violence, so I think we all know that violence or crime is sort of increasing in Brampton. This would kind of remove one of their key funding sources. And many average citizens would switch from drug dealers to government-regulated stores purely for the sake of convenience. I, while I do not personally smoke cannabis, I know a number of people who do, and many were excited when the OCS first opened and they could order cannabis legally. And I think that a lot of people would prefer to buy in an actual store, in which you can get information from people that work there on specific cannabis strains. Just a general other thing, it creates jobs. So Nuvera, which was recently bought by Aphria, I may be butchering those names, is worth $800 million. It's based here in Brampton. They are dealing directly with marijuana. Coca-Cola has announced that they are looking into cannabis beverages. We have a number of companies in the city already using it or looking to use it. So it'd be ridiculous to have that and then not.
Thank you, thank you, Skylar. We've exhausted your time. Now, we have 15 delegations today, so I'm going to ask, with the will of council, rather than ask 10 questions after each presentation, would there be a willingness to ask questions at the end? I assume that all those making deputations will be staying to watch the debate. Okay. So seeing that that's the will of council, thank you, thank you, Skylar. Next up is Jovinder Sodi, Brampton resident. Jovinder, welcome to Brampton City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick Brown and the council members. Happy New Year to everyone. I think some of them we haven't seen. And I'm here to delegate on behalf of homeowners welfare association, consumer rights protection. It's a lobby group. We have been lobby with the city for many years on various issues. Either it's homeowners issues, either it's a consumer rights violation with the province, as well as we do it with the feds as and when we have an opportunity, and we see there is injustice being done to the residents, and we're looking forward today. So it's very simple, basic. We request Brampton City Council to work closely with Peel Police to stop the illegal distribution of cannabis, rather than promoting to the residents, especially our young children. We are requesting humbly to save our children and stop illegal, and especially school kids. We know for years and decades, and it's known that in school zones, I don't specifically say inside the schools, this cannabis has been sold. This doesn't mean that we allow legally to make it worse. We want our council work with the Peel Police closely to stop the illegal sales. Two wrongs doesn't make one right. It's very simple, basic principle. We are also requesting on behalf of Brampton, as in asking you to opt out, which is period. We are not looking forward to any other request, and we looking for a recorded vote as well. So there are many issues which are causing it. In Colorado, in America, one of the provinces, they have legalized cannabis. Guess what? 74% teenager consumption increased. We do not want to repeat the history of residential schools to have our children in a bad path, rather than contributing in a positive way, being a very responsible and member of the society, and put positive contribution to this nation, Canada, which we belongs to. So in order to that, some misconceptions are being said in the past, oh, it will be revenue, it will be illegal sales gone away. This no records, no history is proving it that. And staff report clearly indicates that revenue we are lost. And especially 150 meters, that's a provincial, we'll work with the province, as well as we want to lobby to increase it to at least two kilometers from the school zone and residential zone. And police, police today is struggling to control the crime, break-ins, stolen cars. I live in Castlemore, and where we, every day here, we have a 200-member group, we every day hear, oh, car stolen, break in the house, and police's response time is slow because of the resources. And how will we handle the situation when we already struggling with the resources? We don't have finances to support our police, to have enough resources to handle the current situation. Cannabis-related crime, and cannabis is known to be slowing your reaction when there is a, on a road, somebody is consumed cannabis, they slow down the reaction, it may cause accident, hospitalization, kind of cost going to increase, and workplace problems going to increase. It will not generate a revenue, rather it will cost us double, triple than peanuts of the revenue, which we all hear about 700,000, a billion for such a big city. I pay close to $10,000 property tax. And we have a right to say what we are looking forward from our council and from our mayor for our city growth. We know all those problems, I will not touch those ones today. Today we'll focus only on not to opt in. And what is the rules for the public places? The feds are not prepared when they release this, and they pass on to province, and province pass on to municipalities to make those decisions. If somebody drink, they cannot drink on a public place. Cannabis, there is no rules as of today, as I'm aware. And how the city going to control the growth in the houses? I grow five trees, seven trees, who will monitor that? Where will get the resources to, to control all that? This will be a worst condition for our province, especially for Brampton, and especially Mississauga has been opted out, Calladen opted out, Markham opted out, there are many municipalities opted out. We don't want to become a Brampton as a shopping center for cannabis, which will create more crime, more problems in the city.
Thank you, Jovinder, you've exhausted your time. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate your passion. Next up, we have Andrea Buckner, CEO of Restart Charity.
Thank you very much, Patrick. One more, I have a comment at the end. I've been delegating for so many, so many months, years.
Jovinder?
We want a record, recorded response back to our delegations. We never got it from the city.
Thank you, Jovinder.
We want a recorded response. Thank you. Have a good day.
Hi, my name is Andrea Buckner. I'm also a resident of Castlemore, and I am here, I work with youths, my organization is called Restart, where I support youth in the Brampton Court. I not only support youth, but I support parents, and I'm a mother myself. And I'm here to say, all I'm hearing about this thing is the revenue, and no one is thinking about our children, which is our future for tomorrow. And that is why I'm here, to say opt out, because as my fellow brethren just said, so many cities opt out. When I just moved to Brampton, Brampton is a safe, nice city, and we still want to keep Brampton as that safe, nice city that people want to live in. Never mind the property tax that we pay, everybody have to pay property tax, but we want our city to be clean, and we want our city to be for our future. I'm not a grandmother yet, but I'm looking forward to that one day, and I want, when my grandchildren are growing up, they can be in an environment where they have a safe environment. Never mind the youths that I work with, 99% of them with the parents, the problem they are having, and I know we said it's already legalized, but then we're going to blame our youth when we are the one causing the problem on them. Then we're going to say we don't have enough police to deal with it when we get exposed, when it gets out of hand, we can't deal with it. That's what I have to say. I am not in for this as a mother, as a citizen of Canada and of Brampton. Opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Next up, we have Dr. Ralph Green, a Brampton resident.
Again, I say it's always a pleasure to delegate city council. Patrick, God has given you two fresh starts in your personal life and in your political life. My new prayer for you is that unlike your predecessor, you will not be a one-term mayor. I believe that God promotes and demotes based on our decisions and actions. If in doubt, ask Linda or Kathleen. The decision taken here tonight may well determine the future path of each of you. Tonight, we address the issue of cannabis retail stores in Brampton. As I've made clear before, I have no problem with medical cannabis. My focus is on so-called recreational cannabis. Anyone can walk into Shoppers Drug Mart, ask for a brochure like this, and following the three easy steps, get some cannabis, okay, for medical purposes. The same is true, I believe, provincially. Several municipalities have already opted out. Calladen votes tomorrow night. Now, it was announced here that they'd already voted it out. That was on a staff recommendation to opt out, and they passed that. And I have been in touch, as some of you have, with Calladen Mayor Alan Thompson, and he's pretty sure that tomorrow night, hopefully before midnight, they are going to opt out. Several municipalities have said have opted out already, and let's keep that in mind. He said if we opted in, no bylaw passed would have any power to change or modify anything. Once you're in, you're in. So you can't change the 150-meter thing or anything. You're stuck right there. His final words to me keep ringing in my ears, and they were these, "There are just too many unknowns. There are just too many unknowns." And I keep hearing those, okay? I hope you do as well. The associate medical officer of health outlined on that Thursday evening when we had the large meeting, in explicit detail, all of the hazards and potential impairments that could be suffered by people of all ages, but particularly our vulnerable youth. If we look at the political landscape in Brampton, and this issue is pretty clear to me, what the citizens in Brampton want, none of the Protestants, Roman Catholics, Muslims, Sikhs, or Hindus, and I've spoken to them all, want cannabis retail stores in Brampton. There are still 11 parishes yet to get their petitions to me, and it'll be a little bit late, as you can see. But time was of the essence, and we did what we could in the time we had. In my hand, though, I have well over 1,000 petitions and more to collect. Who's left? If all of those aren't going to vote for you guys in 2022, who's left? The guy who heckled me in the town hall meeting? The guy who said I was too emotional because I shared the story of my granddaughter of 15 years of age who was abducted from her home and almost taken into prostitution ring? Or her next-door neighbor, who with the stress of all that was going on with her friend, smoked a couple of joints and then took a handful of pills, was rushed to Brampton Civic Hospital, and miraculously is still alive? Or the guy who asked how a dispensary could be legitimized? Remember him? Great big guy? But when asked by the police officer, who was sitting at the head table, if he was running an illegal dispensary, realized he was on camera, didn't answer the question, and took off like a shot. If I were running for election in 2022, and I may choose to do so, I choose the honest, hard-working people who love their kids and want you to protect them. Tonight, a dark cloud of cannabis hangs ominously over our city. Your vote can help it dissipate and disappear and bring sunshine tomorrow. God willing, you will vote to opt out. Ladies and gentlemen, the decision is yours, and may someone request a recorded vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Four minutes and 59 seconds exactly. Thank you for staying within your five minutes. Next up, we have Aloha donor, a Topico Creek Residents Association.
Good evening, council. I've been following the debate about cannabis stores in Brampton. I would like to go through a question, I think it's important. Why was cannabis illegal in Canada in the first place? Until 1923, cannabis was legal in Canada and in all North America. No one knows exactly why it became illegal. According to an article from CBC dated May 6, 2014, quote, "In 1923, the Prime Minister William Lionel Mackenzie King's Liberal Government introduced an act to prohibit the improper use of opium and other drugs. The federal health minister at the time, Henry Beland, said the bill was a consolidation of other legislation that had been passed over the previous few years, with some change. At the time, the only drugs on the schedule were opium, morphine, cocaine, and eukane. A local anaesthetic first introduced as a substitute for cocaine. The new bill added three drugs to the prescribing list, heroin, codeine, and cannabis indica, Indian hemp, or hashish. The only mention of the proposed change to the schedule, recorded in the Hansar, was on April 23rd, when Beland told the House of Commons, there is a new drug in the schedule." The same article goes on, explaining that unlike the other drugs on the government prescribing list, marijuana was criminalized in Canada long before it could be defined as a social problem. Why this was so remains a mystery, says the article. And it continues, "There is also no reason to think there was a science behind the decision." The major report of the era, and it was seven volumes in length, was Britain's Indian Hemp Drugs Commission Report, published in 1894, and it said, quote, "Moderate use practically produces no ill effects. According to the report and the evidence the commission heard, shows most clearly how little endurance society has hit her to sustain it from hemp drugs," unquote. Cannabis is finally legal in Canada, and we can help stopping the stigma cannabis users suffer by allowing it to be sold at stores like cigarettes or alcohol, which are more detrimental to health than cannabis. Cannabis cures, and you can make all things with it. Cannabis cures, and you can make all things with its leaves: clothes, papers, blicks, get high, you name it. Speaking of alcohol, without looking at Google Maps, can anyone in this room actually tell me how many Brampton LCBOs, wine wrecks, beer stores, and supermarkets sell alcohol? There are? Does anyone know the closest alcohol place in meters to a school in Brampton? The point of regulation is something that's happening, is so that you know this and can direct it. Some argue that the provincial regulations are not clear, that the money being offered is not enough to cover the associated costs with the legalization. I agree. I agree with these comments, but I believe that we should opt in, help take the drug from the hands of the illegal markets that preys on our children at school, parks, parties, and then start our advocacy with the province, with evidence that more is needed and that we need a bigger share of the profits to cover the cost. Members of council have made bold and repeated statements in the past, including during the campaign, that they can obtain provincial and federal funds for key priorities in Brampton. This is a clear example of requiring more funding, and that's why I'm not worried that the money won't follow if we opt in. Now is the opportunity. As a parent, I have been following this issue closely. I feel that the risk to our children and society in general lies in keep cannabis in the limbo. It's legal, but we don't sell it. There are loose ends still to be tied, because cannabis sells for less in the illegal market, and most people still buy it from the illegal market, which is now selling it online for delivery or in stores that are disguised with a facade of a different kind of business. Adjustments will be needed in all levels of governance, and there will be room for municipalities to increase their share in the profits and cope with the cost increase. I hope council can agree to opt in, thus allowing the sole winner from Brampton to open a store here in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Anna Marie Carrero, Brampton resident.
Good evening, your worship, members of council, panel, and everyone here tonight. I thank you for allowing me to address you all again on this very important issue. My name is Anna Marie Carrero. I am a medical cannabis user with a license from Health Canada to grow my own. I'm here tonight to advocate for the recreational users and give my input as to why we should opt in. Cannabis is legal across Canada, and that's a fact, and it's here to stay. For those who believe that this will increase access to our youth, you are greatly mistaken. You need to provide government photo ID to enter a legal retail cannabis store, showing you are in fact 19-plus years of age. As we learned at the town hall meeting by Detective Sergeant Tony Melarani, I'm sorry if I pronounce his name wrong, Melarani of Peel Police, Brampton currently has, I believe he said, eight illegal dispensaries, which are all being closed down. I didn't even know there was one. Go to your local elementary and high schools, local parks, local plazas, and there you will find the street dealers who don't care how old you are or the quality of cannabis they're selling you. Recently, more and more cannabis from the streets are being found laced with other narcotics, and this is very dangerous. Fear has been put into the residents that once you open a store, we'll get an influx more. Wouldn't you prefer that Brampton have a legal cannabis retail store and not the illegal ones? Currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe Patery, if Brampton opts in, we may get one store or no store at all at this time and in place for two years? Many already know that a resident in Brampton was successful in the lottery with the AGCO and received the license to operate a store. Does this mean he will get his actual store in Brampton? People are scared that there'll be an increase of DUI involving cannabis. Really? It's been going on for years. And how about all the people currently prescribed and taking opiates, codeine, Percocet, Oxycontin, morphine, et cetera? They're still driving, they're still going to work, even though pharmacists label the bottles with warnings. Residents fear this will cause further strain on our already gridlocked hospital because of overdose. Do you know you can't overdose on cannabis alone? Cannabis is a plant, or an herb, whatever you want to call it. Then there's who say, "We already have the OCS, the Ontario Cannabis Store, which is an online ordering system relying on credit card for payment and Canada Post for delivery." Now, what if you don't own a computer or laptop? What if you don't have a credit card? And with the recent postal strike, how do you get delivery? The need for a retail cannabis store is vital and legal. A customer is able to ensure they are getting a good quality, clean product by visually seeing it and ensuring there is no mold, which is the biggest problem we've been hearing in some cannabis coming out of the OCS. If Brampton were to be a city selected for a legal retail cannabis store, that store could provide jobs and revenue, which I think are positives, since we are losing so many other retail stores. A cannabis store could possibly help educate people on the benefits of cannabis and help remove the stigma of its other name: marijuana. What are the residents going to do when their neighbor plants four plants in the backyard this spring? Remember, it's four plants per household, not per adult living in the household. This is legal. What are the residents going to do when their neighbor sits outside and enjoys their cannabis? This is legal. I had a malignant brain tumor which was inoperable and was to have died in late 2014 or early 2015. I was introduced to cannabis in mid-2014, albeit my cannabis is turned into an oil. I do not smoke it. I'm happy to say that on January 17, 2017, tumor had decreased to a point where it could be removed, and as of January 17, 2019, I am able to say and proud to say I am two years cancer-free. Mayor, members of council, please opt in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anna Marie. Next up, we have Richard Blake, Brampton resident.
Good evening, mayor and council. And I want to thank the mayor and council for letting this go to the very last day. I think it was very important to get the community involved, and plus, there was changes that we wouldn't have known about, which is the 25. Initially, a lot of the municipalities opted out way before that, Mississauga, Oakville, and so on. The delegates here put out some really good information, so I'm glad I'm gonna take a little bit of a different approach. I just downloaded off the American Addiction Centers the 12 most addictive drugs. I'll read them out very briefly without describing what their uses are for or the damage they can cause. Amphetamines, benzodiazepines, methadone, GHB, nicotine, alcohol, cocaine, crystal meth, heroin, MDA, oxycontin. I don't see any THC on this list. The first council meeting, I mentioned, I'll share some of my experience, because I've been around the block a few times, I'll be 65 in three days. If my dad was alive, he'd be 88 years old today, and he'd only be advocating for me or be very proud of me being here, because he was an alcoholic. And that alcohol created havoc in our family. I'm the oldest of eight, by the way. And so, a lot of my siblings, we ended up with some pretty heavy addiction issues with alcohol and drugs. So, I first, actually, the first drug I tried was nicotine. That was when I was, I don't know, I think I was 13, 14. Second drug I tried was alcohol, when I was 15. Third one was when I was 17, I tried LSD. That was back in, I think, 1971. That was kind of the drug to do in the day. And then the next one was cannabis. So I've been smoking cannabis for over 45 years. I'm still here. I don't know of any health effects due to cannabis use. But I know when I had issues with alcohol abuse and crack cocaine, which took me to a very bad place, that was serious stuff. I was lucky enough to get out of that. I actually started the, I was introduced to cocaine in 1990. We actually called it freebasing. I thought it was the greatest drug I ever tried. Man, this was so good, and shortly after, I went down into a really bad place. I got out of that after a couple of years. I ended up leaving. My wife moved in with my brother, who had been clean and sober for 21 years. He relapsed, and I went down with him. That's only about four years ago. And we went to hell with the abuse of alcohol and crack cocaine. Today, through a lot of work, I don't do those drugs anymore. I smoke cannabis. But I don't smoke it just for recreational use anymore. I smoke it, it helps me sleep. I rarely take a prescription anti-inflammatory pill now for my arthritis, and it helps me with my appetite. Our healthcare system is burdened with patients in the hospitals because of alcohol and nicotine abuse, and I don't have the facts to back that up, and I think you're all aware of it. Our courts and jails are overburdened with people that abuse alcohol, and the carnage it's called, the carnage that it has caused with domestic abuse and all kinds of violence. I have never, ever heard of anyone dying from ingesting THC. I have never heard of anyone becoming violent after smoking pot. Like I said, I've been smoking pot for over 45 years, but I have seen the devastating effects of alcohol and other drugs. I think there's been a lot of fear put out here, especially about the distance to schools. I don't believe any, anybody would be offered a license to open a shop would even consider putting their establishment close to a school just because of the stigma attached to that. It would be irresponsible for them to do it, and they're gonna be under the microscope, these business owners. And I think they will be some of the best business owners you could possibly have in Brampton.
15 seconds.
Okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to share some of that, and I think I'm a living testament that, you know, 45 years of cannabis use, and I have no medical effects because of that. It's only helped me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nilson Gonzalez, owner and franchisor Culture Rising.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, especially on short notice. My name's Nilson Gonzalez. I own Culture Rising, where are a chain of cannabis accessory stores. We've been operating legally in Ontario since 2006. We have a location here in Brampton at 16 Main Street East, I'm sorry, 16 Queen Street East, and we, every one of our stores is in good standing with our communities, and we haven't had any trouble. We have good relationships with the police even. I have the privilege of serving as Director of Marketing for the Streetsful BIA as well, which I suppose legitimizes what I have to say in some way. We directly employ about five people per location. Collectively, we've contributed almost $300,000 in taxes in 2017 alone, and I'm not bragging, I'm trying to alpha that as context, because there seems to be a diminutive perception of the peanuts that this legal cannabis can offer our communities, and it's really not peanuts. So, I mean, Brampton's got the Georgia Pacific Plant that just closed, that's 130 jobs. Maple Lodge is closing in a few years, it's gonna be another 324 jobs. I don't think Brampton can afford to pass on a new industry that has so much to offer, especially when the voices of opposition are referencing mostly debunked articles by this Mr. Jeff Hunt, who's Vice President of Public Policy at Colorado Christian University, probably one of the only schools that hasn't benefited from cannabis since it's a private religious education. Let me get into this. So, there's a perception that obscuring cannabis is going to keep children safe. That couldn't be farther from the truth. I mean, we're past that. We know that that doesn't work with sex education. Why should it work for cannabis? We have so much invested in policing the areas around schools. Why would we want to go and police another area just to put a cannabis store there? It doesn't make any sense. These are sensitive areas, meaning we've already invested into protecting them. The police would have an easier job keeping everything that they care about in close proximity, and it, you know, it doesn't even end up being a police. The kids won't want to go in them, because their teachers will see them. There's nothing to be gained by further obscuring these things, and there's so much to be gained by allowing it. There's accessory retailers like myself, there's artisans that produce the glass pipes we sell, manufacturers, importers, distributors. These are all jobs that will, you know, be created and are dependent on legal cannabis. That's in addition to the wellness clinics that could benefit elderly patients and veterans and provide them alternatives to opiates. I'm sorry, but I've got a laundry list of dead friends from opiates. Name a dead person from cannabis, please. I'd love to hear that. There's the hemp industry that's about to explode and could replace so many jobs recently lost: cosmetics, plastics, papers, topicals. It's all environmentally friendly products that are not gonna come into a city that's not friendly to cannabis. Eight courses are available at Durham College about the cannabis business. Eight. That's jobs itself. And I mean, these are complicated issues that require deep analysis, which the city has conducted in their study advising for legal cannabis retail. And these are things that really, you know, public opinion is not gonna adequately evaluate. I mean, a petition like this with an inflammatory statement does nothing to educate. This is, this, I mean, this is just threatening people with dead kids because of cookies. Seriously, this is not something we can base policy on when there's so much to gain and so little to lose. I mean, cannabis is legal. That's just already happened. You know, there's nothing to be gained, and, I mean, even, I just found a study today that property values have gone up by 6% in the area directly around cannabis dispensaries in Colorado. That's not peanuts. That's about it. I'm happy to answer questions afterwards.
Thank you. Thank you, Nilson. Next up, we have Akin Adunatan, Brema Lee Church of God. Akin, welcome back to Brampton City Council.
Thank you. Good evening, council, ladies and gentlemen. What a privilege to say that and encourage each and every one of us here in this room to opt out from the retail sales shop of cannabis and marijuana and the associated product, especially talking about locating it 150 meters from school. That's very scary, because young guys, young ladies, they try things, I mean, you know, I have four boys, ranging, oldest is 26, youngest is 19, very vibrant, and you will agree with me that if such things are allowed in this city, we have a problem in our hands. The aftereffect of cannabis, you and I don't have an idea, because, trust me, cannabis is very addictive, very, very addictive. And then the frequent use of cannabis in any individual, it's very, very dangerous. I took a survey from the, from my research, Health Canada Canadian Student Tobacco, Alcohol and Drug Survey. This survey was done by Propel Center for Population Health Impact at the University of Waterloo. And this is what it came out to, came out to. 25% of the students thought that smoking cannabis once in a while, people would get a great risk. Listen to this. Now, 14% said no risk. Now hear this. When asked about smoking cannabis on a regular basis, this is from Health Canada now, the prevalence of students who thought that people were at great risk rose to 58%. And those that said no risk reduced to 7%. Think about that, please. The combination of cannabis and alcohol... The combination of cannabis and alcohol intake is very scary. And when, the rate at which it states in the system, body system, it takes longer time. And like somebody said, it slows down your activity. And that's why I'm proposing that we should opt out from these retail stores and its products. Youth and students who are under age look for every means to get what they want. I'll tell you a story. I was to go to a convenience store, and three guys were already there before I got in. They walked up to me, they said they wanted to buy cigarettes, but they were under age. They offered me money to help them buy cigarettes in the convenience store, and I know you know that. So if I am, well, I mean, if a kid walks to me in retail store by the, in Brampton, says, please help me buy cannabis because I can't buy that. So what happens? I'm ruining the, the future of that child, and I'm ruining the career of that child. Let's have a thought about that. Addiction is a major factor to be considered, please. When it occurs in an individual, no matter the age, the expenses of withdrawal symptoms, rehabilitation will kick in. And the, the money we are planning to get from the retail store will be pumped into making sure that we take care of those who are already addicted or affected by this I also want you to look and think, if shops were allowed, does it mean that Brampton would be broke, or were not allowed? Does it mean that Brampton city would be broke? Okay, thank you. If cannabis is not legalized, does it mean that the city of Brampton will not have adequate funding for the management of the city and the running of projects and everything that to be done? Does it mean that cannabis is our sustenance? No. Thank you. Long time and short time effect of cannabis cause impaired, it impairs your ability to drive and safe operation of equipment. My wife's job place totally comes against whoever is smoking cannabis, because they don't even want to allow that. It's also affect the moods and feeling. It makes you to learn, your, your learning process to be slow. It affects your mental health, makes your physical dependent on cannabis and makes you addicted. It hurts, absolutely. Now my question, would cannabis be an asset or a liability? Two.
Thank you, thank you, Akin. We are, you've exhausted your time.
Okay. Thank you so much. I really will appreciate if the question will be to opt out from this cannabis.
Thank you for your feedback. Yolanda Slater, Entrepreneur.
So, good evening, Your Worship and Council members. Please, could you work with me and let me know when I'm at one minute, like I have one minute left?
Okay.
Not five seconds?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so I have prepared a very well-written speech. However, after listening to the responses, I would like to speak from my heart. And first, before I even speak, I'd like to say a word of prayer. And I'm saying the word of prayer, not because I'm religious, but because I believe in prayers and Mayor, City Councilors, and everyone here. This meeting is setting the course of our city for the next five, 10, 50, 100 years, because if we opt in right now, we can never opt out. You cannot opt out once you opt in. So Father God, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here today. Thank you, oh God, that your wisdom is made manifest in the persons who need to make decisions tonight. We come here to pray for this city often as residents. I'm a young millennial, however, I see my city as a very important place to be and a very important place to advocate for. So tonight, as I stand here in your authority, Jesus, fill my mouth, fill my mouth with your words. Praise the Lord. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Amen. Say amen. Praise God. All right, so first and foremost, the CIO mentioned that for the 311 calls, we had 135 responders, we had 765 responders to another event, 8,500, et cetera, et cetera, but it, this did not surpass even 10,000. How many residents live in Brampton? About 600,000, right? Correct? Is that number representative of our population? No, it is not. Therefore, his entire argument that we've done extensive community engagement is nullified because we did not mobilize the community, and even delegates have mentioned, and council members also, the fact that when they have gone out into the community, the residents are confused. They're confused, they're not aware that, you know, yes, legalization has happened. I know that happened before all the communication and all the policies were established. However, we now have an opportunity to correct the wrong, in a way, you know, to stand up for Brampton and our citizens, to essentially say, you know what, we don't want to paint the picture that four plant shops or plant plants in our backyard and smoking a spliff on a warm summer day is okay, in addition to having stores all around the city. It's not a very good image to paint. At the moment, you know, cash money stores, I know it's not the same thing, but if you look at cash money stores, the individuals who, you know, frequent those places unfortunately are also going to be the ones who frequent these cannabis spaces, and those cash money spaces are not located in upscale neighborhoods. They're always located in particular neighborhoods, and I can guarantee you, when these stores come for cannabis, they will be in the high-profile neighborhoods that our, our police officers are already struggling with. So tonight, I had so much to say, but I just want to tug at your heartstrings, because even in your own correspondence, you said that regardless of the decision you make tonight, you still have to advocate to the province, you know, for, you still have the opportunity to advocate for more money to help with your city services. So why put us in a position of the unknown, like Hello Kitty without a mouth?
One minute left.
Thank you very much. So you'll be tied to this, you know, policy where you, you have no say where the stores will be located. You have no position. So how about saying, I opt out? We opt out. Give us time to do research. Do not present the, the public information after the fact. It does not make any sense. And as leaders, you're selected to serve, you're selected to serve us, not for the, the, the minds of the, the multinationals and the economic persons who want money in their pockets, but you're selected to serve the majority, the unborn children or grandchildren, everyone, the elderly, the retirees, everyone who has fought for the city of Brampton. It is your duty to consider them, and we never reached out to them. Have you gone to a long-term facility and spoken to them? No, you haven't. So I believe we should have an opportunity to speak to them and more. In Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ryan Elcock, Brampton resident.
Welcome to Brampton City Council. Oh, yeah. Good evening, Council. Should Brampton opt in to retail cannabis stores? As someone who does not partake in marijuana, it would be safe to assume that I would be totally against it. However, I believe that we should opt in, as marijuana is already legal and that ship has sailed and has gone to other parts of the world. This brings me to my next question. Why are we so against legalization? I would say that this stems from our belief in who uses marijuana. We tend to believe that marijuana users are the typical rebellious youth who succumb to peer pressure, want to experiment in drugs, and defy their parents, people with criminal tendencies, shiftless people with no ambition, visible minorities, which was used as the justification by Emily Murphy for making marijuana illegal back in 1923, homeless people, and people addicted to other drugs. However, if we take a deeper look, we would see that the average users are also the following: professionals such as doctors, lawyers, business people, politicians, university college-educated students, people from all walks of life, races, socioeconomic backgrounds, gender and sexual orientation, law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMS workers. Furthermore, if we were to research the reason why people use marijuana, you'd find that the majority use it for pain management, such at 52.5%, according to Stats Canada, stress anxiety relief at 18.8%, to battle insomnia at 18.3%, manage seizures and epilepsy, and as well as help manage appetite. Although we are worried that opting into retail cannabis will lead to an increase in teenagers using it, the data from Stats Canada has also found that the rate of cannabis users aged 15 to 17 has fallen. Similarly, the rate of smoking among this age group has also fallen too, and smoking is currently legal and its use is just as detrimental, if not more. Finally, although there is some assumption, an assumption that the opt-in will give all dispensaries license, no pun intended, to sell to whomever they want, however they want, nothing could be further from the truth. We can be sure that licensed dispensaries will be under strict regulation and monitoring. Police will be better equipped to crack down on unlicensed dispensaries, thereby blunting the edge, no pun intending, intended again, of the illicit market. Licensed dispensaries welcome the oversight and regulation because they want the ability to better serve their customers in a transparent manner, and we also need to pressure the provincial and federal government to effectively manage the rolling out of retail cannabis stores. If we do not opt in, we may feel good now, but we must never forget the law of unintended consequences, in which preventing licensed dispensaries from operating today help fuel the profits of the illegal dispensaries tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next up, we have Andrew DeGroot, Brampton resident.
Your Worship, Council, staff, thanks for, thanks for this wonderful night this evening to go over a very important issue for Brampton. I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of sort of common themes from the no side, so I wanted to start tonight's comments with just addressing those. Cannabis is legal in Canada. Whether we opt in or not, people will smoke cannabis in Brampton. Whether we opt in or not, people will smoke cannabis at work. Whether we opt in or not, people will be walking down the streets of Brampton smelling cannabis. Whether we opt in or not, if you want to buy cannabis, you will be able to in Brampton. You will be able to have it delivered to your house. You will be able to go to a neighboring city, buy it there, and bring it back and use it in your house. You will be able to grow it yourself, or you will be able to buy it illegally in Brampton or in other cities. So the question today is not, is cannabis going to be in Brampton, and are we going to have more people with, you know, with cannabis walking our streets? That decision has been made. The decision today is, will you be able to legally walk into a store in Brampton and buy cannabis? And the, there seems to be very little negative reasons to say no to that. You know, of all, of all the people I've heard so far saying no to cannabis, very little or none were directed at having one store in our city. I think I heard the CIO say earlier that there are already something like seven or eight illegally operating in the city. So we take those out, we get, we get a legal one, we will have many fewer than we do today. So that's, that's the end of my, my comments. I'm going to leave with three questions. First off, the CIO had mentioned a number of costs that were associated with cannabis. I'd like clarification on whether those costs exist regardless of us opting in or not, which I assume they do. The second question is, if we opt in and we get money from the province for opting in, and it goes to regional services, is there a way to ensure that that money stays within the city of Brampton and is not used elsewhere within the region, since, since Mississauga has chosen to opt out of that? And thirdly, and related, we will be getting money for policing, and again, I would like to see a way for us to ensure that that money gets focused on policing within Brampton, because we do have a regional policing, policing government. And then finally, assuming you make, make the right decision tonight and opt in, I would love a, a recommendation or a request from staff back to the province, and I'm sure you have many that you've already considered, but at least, at least one that I would like to see is that Brampton, at some point in the future, has the ability to zone where these stores go. That would be a great change to have in the current legislation, to give Brampton that ability to, to choose where, where we allow these stores within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next up, we have Roger Stewart, Brampton resident.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of Council. I'm a father of two children, nine and 14, and I constantly ask them to think about what is it we're proud of in Canada. And I ask young people that I work with. And one young girl recently said to me late last year, hey, Mr. Stewart, do you remember, do you know that the Ontario government passed a law that made it legal for six wearing turbans to ride on motorcycles? And, and we had that discussion, and we talked about how inclusive Canada is, how bold Canada is, how we respect everyone in our community. And we talked about some of the things that Canada in the past had to apologize for, for being afraid, for letting fear control our immigration policies of the 19th and 20th, early 20th century. Today, Canada is seen as a world leader in diversity. We were bold enough to take chances on people who looked different, who prayed different, because we all understood that they're all Canadians, they're all people who want to prosper. We didn't allow our fears to control us. The fact is cannabis is legal, and I believe in our city, the ninth most populated city in the country. And it would, it would be a shame if we didn't include a cannabis location in our city because we were afraid. As a young university student, and I tell young people this, many times I would, when I would commute, people who didn't look like me would move, would leave their seats where I sat, because they were afraid of how I looked like. People would grab their purses. Fear should never, ever control doing the right thing. Yeah, we don't know what it's going to be, but we know it's the future, and we control our destiny. Stratford is embracing the future. They wired their city to invite self-driving car manufacturers to test what happens when an accident does happen. We know it will, but we also know the future is self-driving vehicles. Ironically enough, we had a major snowstorm, lots of accidents, right? Human error, number one reason, not mechanical failure. Will everything go right? No. Most things will go right, because we believe that you, Council, and the people that make up our city of Brampton want to do the right thing, want to see our city, our province, our country go forward. We are bold in our immigration policy. We are, our government is taking on America and China with this, this CEO executive from China. It could have been that they, they didn't issue that. It could have been that they, they didn't issue that order, they did not arrest this lady. It would have been the wrong thing to do if you acted on fear. It's easy, it's easy to say, oh, this could happen, this could happen, sure. What could happen is we could make a, a choice that says to our citizens, we believe in your responsibility. Brampton is a great city to live in, and if it wasn't, many of us would not live here. We choose here, because we believe in it now and its future. And I hope that when you debate this issue, you don't act on fear, you act on the good nature of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Meru F. Whale, Brampton resident. Do we have Meru here? Seeing that Meru isn't here, that was the last deputation. Now, I know there's going to be a number of questions, or there could be a number of questions, and then after the questions, we'll move to the actual discussion before council. So councillor Pulashy first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't have any questions, delegations, and if I request that after members have questions, delegations, maybe we can take a short 10-minute recess just to collect the thoughts. My only comment was to Mr. Nelson, no need to get up or anything, I just wanted to clarify, Maple Lodge Farms is very well happy expanding here in Brampton, it's Maple Leaf Foods that unfortunately is leaving. Big company in my area, just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and a note that we'll take a short recess after the questions before we move to the main discussion. Councillor, councillor Dylan.
Just a couple of quick points, I guess we'll have for the, just to the delegation.
Who's the question to?
Just the delegation. There's a couple of points, just.
So which, which delegation is the question to?
Sorry, what's your name?
Skylar.
Oh, Skylar, right. Oh, no, I just, I just wanted to make a, a, a comment. You know, we did add 22,000 jobs in the last, in the last four years.
Okay, so councillor, councillor Dylan, just been instructed by the, comments will be reserved for the, the debate portion. If you want to ask your comment in the form of a question.
Just wanted to clarify some comments made in terms of the jobs that left. I wanted to let them know that we also added some jobs as well, so I'll leave that.
Thank you. Councillor Vicente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask a simple question of several delegations, if I may have them come up. First, I'd like to see Skylar Roberts, and then Dr. Ralph Green.
Yes, councillor.
And Richard Blake. Skylar, just a simple question. Do you use cannabis?
I don't.
Okay, so why are you supporting the opening of cannabis stores?
I know a number of people who do, who use it both medicinally and recreationally. I think it's just, in general, a benefit for the city in terms of jobs. I know you said that Brampton has added jobs, this will add more, and it, you know, reduces crime, so.
And as another point, thank you for coming and delegating today.
Thank you.
Is Dr. Ralph Green still here? No, I have a slightly different one here.
You have a question for me?
Yes, Dr. Green, just a quick question. You do not support the opening of stores.
That's true. I'm strongly against it.
Is that fair, then, to say that you would never shop at one of those stores?
Certainly.
Not even for medicinal reasons?
I don't have any particular need at the moment. If I did have a need, I might.
Okay, thank you.
But I think I would probably use Shopper's Drug Mart.
Thank you, sir.
I held up the brochure for it. Thank you.
And may I ask a question, Mr. Chair of Aloe Adoner, and then Richard Blake.
Aloe's lap.
She's lap, okay. And is Mr. Richard Blake here?
Yes, sir.
You were in support of opening the stores.
Absolutely.
I take it, then, that you would shop at these stores?
No question about it. I mean, until, when it was illegal, I was going to Toronto and buying at the dispensaries in Toronto, which is kind of weird, because now that it's legal, there's no dispensaries. But, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's where, I mean, it's quality control. I, I used to smoke for recreational reasons, I smoke for other reasons now. And so I, quality control is, is really important. You can buy on the street anywhere here. I'm not interested in that stuff, I don't know what I'm buying. So the quality and the, the expertise of the people that work in these stores is, is very important. You get feedback right away, so you don't have to wait any time, you don't have to do any research, they have it. And, and that's, that's really important. There's a price to pay for this. Cannabis legally is, is much more expensive than illegal, so my view on that, there's always going to be an underground market. I mean, you can order, you can get weed delivered to your house right now through Weed Maps, an app that I was given yesterday by a gentleman. There's no storefront. This is covert stuff, and you can order it, so I can get it cheaper, I don't want to do that. I'd rather just go to a dispensary, I mean, if you don't open one here, I'm into Toronto in April, so.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
My final question is for Pastor Aiken, if I may. Thank you, Chair. It's pastor, I presume?
No, no, no.
No? Okay, Mr. Aiken O'Don ton.
Yes.
You are not in favor of the stores.
Absolutely.
So is it fair to say that you would never shop at them yourself, whether for recreational or medicinal reasons?
I wouldn't do that, because I don't even smoke cigarettes, so.
So you have no intention of shopping at the stores?
I would never do that, because I believe if you want to use it for medicinal purpose, let's, let's restrict it to prescribed medication, so that the doctors, just like other prescribed medication, so it can be purchased from Shopper's Drug Mart or whatever, rather than making it a retail store, which is more hazardous. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't patronize.
Thank you very much to delegates, and thank you, Chair.
Councillor Fertini.
Thank you, through the mayor. Just a quick question to our city manager, and there was a rumor, I'm trying to find it in the report here, and I don't know if you could answer it, that what happened with all these court cases in court, I think they were all thrown out? Is that, is that a rumor, is it true, you know? Anyone that been charged for the cannabis under 30 milligrams, they were thrown out of court? It just, everything got thrown out?
Through this, through you, your worship, those matters may be before the courts, it is something that was being contemplated by the Crown in terms of whether or not those cases would stand, or whether or not they would get thrown out. The actual status of those, I am not aware of, but it is something the Attorney General's Office, through their Criminal Services Unit, as well as the various police forces, are looking into.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Questions only to the delegates.
To the delegates. I'll have one question myself, a question for Dr. Ralph Green. I'll ask the question as you come up. One of the things I try to stress is that this discussion tonight is not about legalization of marijuana, that was passed by the federal government. Does it change your position, knowing that the federal government has already passed the legis, the legislation legalizing cannabis, and that the federal Conservative Party, the federal NDP party, the Bloc Quebecois have all said, and the Green Party have all said that they are not going to revisit the legalization? Does that change your position at all?
Me?
Yes.
At the federal level?
Yes, that, that all the parties have committed they're not going to change the legalization.
Well, I appreciate what you're telling me, but I, I think we're locked in now, basically, and no one's challenging it, is what you're telling me.
Knowing that the police funding is contingent upon opting, that doesn't change your position?
I think that staff told us that whatever funding there is would not be sufficient to hire the police you needed. That means, then, that some of the burden has to fall upon taxpayers. If a burden falls upon taxpayers, taxes go up. All you guys look bad.
Okay, thank you, thank you for sharing your input tonight.
Okay.
And thank you for Dr. Ralph Green participating in our in-person event as well, so we appreciate all the input. I think we've had a lot of input from the residents of Brampton. We are, we're grateful that we have the type of democracy that so many people want to participate and do participate. Seeing no other questions, councillor Pulashy has requested that we have a quick break before the main motion. I think he has already started that, that break, so we'll, we'll, we'll return in 10 minutes. Okay, 15 minutes, 9 o'clock we'll return. Thank you, it's time to return to order. If we could ask everyone to take their seats. I have a motion from councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Dylan, to the following delegations to the special council meeting January 21st, 2019, in regard to legalization of recreational cannabis in Canada, private cannabis retail stores in the city of Brampton be received, and it lists all 15 delegations. All in favor?
Motion carries.
Councillor Santos, you have the floor. Next, you asked to present your motion.
Yes, I did. Thank you, through you, mayor. So at the end of my remarks, I will be bringing forward a motion for our council to consider. So today is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Because this past week included references to another leader in the USA, I thought it would enlighten the debate to honor Martin Luther King Jr. instead. Around this time in 1947, Martin Luther King Jr. wrote The Purpose of Education, and here is an excerpt, quote, "To save man from the morass of propaganda, in my opinion, is one of the chief aims of education. Education must enable one to sift and weigh evidence, to discern the true from the false, the real from the unreal, and the facts from the fiction," from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This community is somewhat split on the issue of cannabis retail in Brampton, and therefore it is critical to draw on education and evidence for this decision. As a mom, my knee-jerk reaction was to opt out of retail cannabis based on fear and stigma. However, after presentations from staff, listening to residents on both sides of the debate, and conducting my own personal research, my initial knee-jerk reaction was wrong. At the town hall meeting on December 10th, I witnessed a number of participants who initially wanted to opt out and change their minds after the presentation and debate. People like Daryl Romeo, who ran as a candidate in the same area as me, and Carla Bailey, who ran as a candidate in the same area as councillor Williams, both initially wanted us to opt out, but after understanding the facts, they were now suggesting that we opt in. I want all of us to just consider a few points. Number one, despite the federal government legalizing recreational cannabis, the reality is, it's already here. It has been sold and consumed illegally for years in our neighborhoods with zero control over the potency, quality, and safety of the product. Controlled distribution of the product would counter this illegal market. Any notion to suggest that it can be stopped or blocked is misleading. Only the federal government can reinstate prohibition, which still wouldn't keep it out of our neighborhood. Number two, the argument around retail cannabis inflicting more crime and violence has proven to be false. In fact, it is quite the opposite. Studies published in the Foundation for Economic Education, the Journal of Economic Behavior and Organization, and the Journal of Urban Economics suggest that the legalization of cannabis with controlled and regulated distribution can actually decrease criminal activity, mostly referencing a decrease in violent crime and theft. Number three, economic impact and cost to the property taxpayer. Only one Brampton retailer was selected in the lottery on January 11th. When you consider the cost we must absorb to locally enforce the legalization of the product and the potential revenue the city would forfeit, we seriously have to ask ourselves, is it worth it for one or two stores in Brampton? Many residents have also pointed out to the economic impact and job creation from this emerging sector, all important considerations as we look ahead to budget deliberations in the city. Number four, a pot shop invasion, if and when the province decides to increase the number of licenses issued. This hypothetical assumption is one solely based on fear. There is a cannabis supply shortage. I'm not sure how the invasion will happen if the supply to sell the product is extremely limited. Perhaps we should ask Will Smith for advice based on his experience in Independence Day. All ridiculousness aside, I would imagine that anyone who has the luck of the draw with a retail cannabis license will not want to mess up the opportunity. It makes market sense and serves their interests to behave as responsibly as possible, because if they don't, they could ruin their brand and any chance for them to sell in any other local market. Number five, it has been suggested we opt out because of surrounding municipalities, but we can't base this decision on a game of Simon Says. This decision must be based on the best interests of Brampton. If we are looking for solidarity from other municipalities, I can guarantee you that they are only looking for their own interests and their own share of the pie, and if we have no idea if and when any of them will opt in, in the future. So what's the point in waiting? We can still advocate and push the federal and provincial governments for more control and our fair share regardless. The decision to opt in now almost guarantees a larger share of the pie to help us offset our costs, and it increases the certainty around a new revenue stream. So, I too wanted to opt out as a knee-jerk reaction. However, when we push the propaganda, misperception, stigma, and fear aside to truly understand the issue, it is in the best interests of Brampton to make the rational choice to opt in. And so on that note, I'd like to bring the motion forward. I believe the clerk.
Thank you, councillor Santos, for keeping it to five minutes. I'm going to ask all councillors, respect that. You've, you've completed your remarks, but we will indulge you for time separately to introduce your motion. I've, I know it's a lengthy motion, so we'll give you time to properly.
I will. So there were a lot of whereas's, which I've summarized it in my remarks and will be available online. However, I will go straight to now therefore be it resolved that, number one, city council not opt out of provincially licensed cannabis retail stores in Brampton. Number two, the city continue to advocate to both the provincial and federal governments for its share of the revenue to offset all costs, including unanticipated costs associated to the city, region of Peel, and Peel Regional Police due to the federal government's decision to legalize cannabis. Number three, city council authorize the chief administrative officer to negotiate and enter into any required agreements to receive intergovernmental funding for implementation of cannabis legalization, with terms and conditions satisfactory to the CIO and the city solicitor. Number four, city council request the province of Ontario to provide the city with a regulatory authority to further restrict the location of cannabis retail stores based on proximity to other city-identified sensitive uses such as schools, community centers, youth facilities, addiction treatment centers, and other cannabis retail stores. Number five, city council request the province of Ontario to allocate the funding and revenue specifically to each municipality that has opted in to retail cannabis within Peel Region, and ensure this funding and revenue is directed to services within the municipalities that have opted in. Number six, city council request the CIO, Commissioner of Corporate Services, in consultation with the Peel Regional Medical Officer for Public Health, report on: A) Possible bylaw amendments, including penalties and fines, to prohibit the consumption of lit recreational cannabis in public places in the city of Brampton, such as, but not limited to, city parks, trails, natural areas, sidewalks and roads, and at least 150 meters from childcare facilities, libraries, community centers, halfway houses, group homes, methadone clinics, harm reduction clinics, mental health facilities, youth counseling services, and other at-risk community places. And B) Actions in other Ontario jurisdictions related to prohibiting the consumption of lit cannabis in public places. That is the motion.
Thank you, councillor Santos, we have a motion on the floor. And next up, we have councillor Fertini.
Thank you, through the mayor. Thank you, councillor Santos, that was amazing. So I hope, whatever the outcome is of this debate tonight, it's not going to happen like the LRT did, divide us, we should. We should all vote respectable. And I understand, you know, these decisions come to us, and we're stuck in the middle of a yes or no. And at the end of the day, I'm looking at the stats from my ward seven and eight, and the majority of the people are saying yes. So I guess they're the people that actually put us here, so I have to go with what the resident says. But we look at what all the reports that their staff's saying. It's going to cost us tax. We're not getting any money. It's going to reduce crime. So at the end of the day, what are we going to do when it comes to budget? Are we going to go over to the taxpayers and say, well, we have to increase your taxes because we need more policing or more bylaws? Or are we going to go over to recreation centers or ask the seniors, we can give you free facilities because of the extra money we need? So I'm in favor of opting in. And at the end of the day, just like I said, I hope, you know, whatever happens here today that doesn't go back to the LRT and divide the council and start working against each other.
Thank you, Counselor Fertini. Counselor Mederos.
Thank you through the mayor. First of all, thank you, Counselor Santos, for putting forth this motion, and Mayor Brown for seconding it. Comprehensive motion. I think also your prelude into the motion really, I think, captured all the arguments. I think certainly we heard from our residents today, which regardless of where they are on the issue, it is a passionate issue. But I do think there's a couple of points and takeaways on why I want to support this motion. To destigmatize, because a lot of, I guess, the rhetoric I've been hearing leads to stigmatization of the use of marijuana. And that's not the decision before council. It's been expressed over and over. The decision has been made that it's a legalized substance, legalized practice and use. So today essentially is, how do we work with a possible retail store in our community? And I think one of the important aspects, which is subtle in this motion, because I've heard other communities who've opted out to say, we want to sit back and see how it plays out in other municipalities. Well, I think what this council says today and what this motion brings to the floor is that now we can work with the province to control how it's implemented in our community. We'll be, you know, through our staff, from a technical analysis, from experiential, from what we hear from our residents, how is it being played out? And certainly we have more control on how it gets, how we can, let's say, improve the situation and make it more of a positive experience. Certainly, there's going to be challenges. There are challenges here with the cannabis store or not a cannabis store. But essentially, speaking to the motion, Mr. Mayor, I think Counselor Santos has comprehensively captured the spirit of our decision today. And I certainly thank you for putting this forth, and I plan on supporting your motion. And I thank all the delegates and all the residents of Brampton who engaged in this important public debate.
Counselor Bowman.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to all the delegates, pro and con, opt-in, opt-out. In some instances, it takes a lot of guts to come up here and stand in front of council and talk about your experience, talk about your life, how things have changed. So I truly appreciate all of you coming in today to tell us how you feel and to give us an indication of whether you think we should opt in or opt out. As far as the motion goes, I do have a question, Joe, so I'll get to the motion afterwards. When it comes down to actual enforcement, what will bylaw officers be responsible for within the city as opposed to police?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In response, Counselor Bowman, there's two specific areas that we would be working on, and that's through our nuisance bylaw as well as our odor bylaw potentially. Those would be the two key pieces of enforcement. My understanding also is that there has been a strong relationship between our enforcement team along with Peel Regional Police to deal with some of these illegal dispensaries as well. They are also looking at, in partnership with enforcement and our security team, to do some of that enforcement in our parks and trails as well. Some of that may also depend on the position the region appeal takes and potentially the city of Brampton in terms of places of use for the consumption of lit cannabis.
Okay, so it's definitely going to be an increase in the responsibilities that we would normally have anyway since before it was legalized.
Through the chair, correct. And potentially that could grow even depending on what happens with the number of plants that people start to grow. And if there are issues with people exceeding the four plants considerably, there could end up being issues from a building perspective as well as from a fire perspective.
Okay, thank you. Concerning the motion, thank you, Counselor Santos. I don't know, Mr. Fay, if we need to add a number seven there, the same number seven that appeared in the recommendations that a copy of the report be sent to the Minister of Finance, the Attorney General, the Alcohol Gaming Commission, Peel Regional Police, and the Peel region. I don't know if we still need to do that after this meeting. Do we need to send them any notification?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We can, but it is not a requirement. The only requirement to the province is in fact that it go to the AGCO if you're opting out.
Okay.
But we will gladly share this report with our partners for sure.
Okay, because as a friendly amendment, I would like to add that, that we do do that, because if we're going to make a statement, if this council decides that we're opting in, I would prefer to let them know we're opting in as opposed to saying nothing and having them assume we're opting in. So that's a friendly amendment, I would think, okay? And finally, I'd just like to thank those who are on medicinal marijuana as well for coming. My father was actually put on it at 80 years old to assist with his chronic pain as well. So I understand the benefits and how that's going to impact. But, you know, that's going to be sold whether or not we opt in for a store or not. So I will listen to all the other counselors, and then I guess we will take a recorded vote. Thank you.
I'll take that as a request for a recorded vote?
Sure.
Counselor Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to speak to the morality of cannabis or the legality of it. However, I do want to speak on the way the province has rolled it out, which I'm pretty sure that most of council disagrees with. Under the previous regime, cannabis was to be sold in government-run stores, and Ontarians would have been able to consume it and only been able to consume it in private residences. Now, the current provincial government shrunk the mandatory buffer between pot shops and schools from about 500 meters to 150 meters. And the new rules by the current government allows cannabis to be smoked by anyone over 19 wherever. Smoking of tobacco is permitted. My issues are these, that the city has no control over how many pot shops will open and where they locate. For this reason, I highly recommend that we opt out from selling cannabis privately to send a strong message and use this decision as a leverage to get provincial agreement for more local control. I don't think we should necessarily sell our soul for a million and a half or $2 million. Let's join the majority of the other 905 municipalities representing 3 to 4 million people who have said no until more controls are given to municipalities. And when the province changes its rules, this council can decide to opt in at that time. As well, why not wait until we have better policies in place and see how private shops run in other cities? What I'm simply asking is let's not cave in, and let's not be weak on the issue. Each municipality is different. Some might be more stringent, some might be more lenient, some might feel that they don't want it at all, some might feel that they want a tourist area to get more tourism dollars for cannabis, for all we know. But what we know is that we have 25 shops coming in province-wide now. But what if the province chooses to have, you know, 25 shops in Ward three or four, or Ward nine and 10, or Ward one and five? We have no control over that. And can you, I'm asking the CAO, can you confirm if we have control over where the shops go or not?
We have, through the chair, we have no direct control as to where the stores go, except they must be in areas zoned retail. And, pardon me. And again, through the AGCO, through the, there's a 15-day consultation period where we can provide commentary and feedback to the province to try and provide any feedback and any of our concerns in three specific areas. But very quickly, in answer to your question, the answer's no.
We don't have control. And that's all I'm saying right now. We hear about fear. We hear about a pot shop invasion. The province can put these shops anywhere they want. We have no control over it. And what we've seen also is this government, same government, take our university away within 24 hours of an election. So there's a lot of unknown. You know, they've also reduced the size of Toronto's council, made such a major move mid-election. And if anyone can guarantee that there won't be an influx of shops in a particular ward or across the city, you know, I'd like that information. Toronto's chief planner told council he was hard-pressed to think of another example where council had zero control over land use in its boundaries, zero control. Mississauga council said there were too many unanswered questions, that they don't want to be the province's guinea pig, and that their city was being rushed into a decision without any ability to control or plan the outcome. Ottawa city council also voted to opt out with similar reservations about lack of control. And so a couple, excuse me, a couple of points which the delegates had said, you know, it's going to bring in jobs. It might bring in jobs. We've turned the corner. We started, we brought in about 22,000 jobs last term. And so, you know, I do understand the need for small business, and I respect that. I heard the gentleman say, we control our destiny. We don't control our destiny in this. The province controls our destiny. And until they give us more controls, I don't know if there'll be 1,000 shops here or there'll be one shop, because we don't know what this province can do. And so that's what my point is. I do understand there's a motion on the floor. I was going to put a motion forward that says that the city of Brampton opt out of private cannabis sales until more controls are given to municipalities, and that the city immediately request the province to restrict shops within 500 meters of schools.
Okay, so Counselor Dillon, just to wrap up, we're past the five minutes. Counselor Dillon's attempting to wrap up.
I don't interrupt when you speak. I don't interrupt when you speak. There's a motion on the floor. And I understand we have to speak to the motion. What I wanted to do was let the public know what my motion would have been. I guess the protocol is that we can only speak to one motion at a time. So if that motion passes, my motion won't see the floor. So I thought it'd be best to let the public know what my motion is. If that motion fails, I'll put forth my motion. So the motion was that the city of Brampton opt out of private cannabis sales until more controls are given to municipalities, and that the city immediately request the province to restrict shops within 500 meters of schools, recreation facilities, community centers, and religious places of worship. And so we'll see how this vote goes. If it doesn't pass, then I'll put my motion forward.
Thank you for council's indulgence. We do want to be, give discretion to make sure everyone has an opportunity to voice their concerns. Next up on the list is Counselor Williams.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Thanks, Renee, for putting that motion on the floor. But I am here to tell you that Flower City should not become known as Weed City by allowing pot to be sold in local shops and stores. I'll be voting no to marijuana stores in our neighborhood and encouraging all my colleagues to really consider doing the same. I have consulted extensively with constituents over the course of the last six months. During the municipal campaign, I met with voters who were concerned about proximity of retail stores to schools. I launched this petition asking for the city, for a city bylaw that would maintain a 500-meter buffer between schools and marijuana stores. I even included the idea on 20,000 canvas cards distributed to homes in Ward seven, eight. After that petition was launched, the provincial government made changes to the legislation and rules and decided that cities like Brampton could not impose buffer zones, nor could we limit the number of proximity, number and proximity of marijuana stores to each other. On October 16, a part of my campaign, I conducted an interactive voter response poll. The call went out to 14,000 households. A random sample of 932 responded to the poll. 70% of the decided voters said they were in favor of opting out, and 30% of the decided voters said they were in favor of opting in. The poll was conducted on October 16th, the day before legalization. Now, on October 18th, the day after legalization and four days before the election, I delivered a robocall message to about 14,000 households explaining that if elected, I would vote to opt out of retail marijuana sales in Brampton and lead the fight to opt out. I am keeping my promise to voters. On October 29th, I held a community consultation meeting, and I even attended community consultation meetings in other parts of the Peel region. Over 1,500, seven and eight residents have signed petitions to opt out, and hundreds have posted lawn signs, sending out messages to the mayor and members of council asking us to opt out. People, I've looked critically at the financial offer from the province and weighed the pros and cons. It will cost $9 million to police cannabis stores in Peel region, and the province is offering $1 million. You don't need to be a businessperson or businesswoman man to know that that's a bad deal. So I've come to the conclusion that Brampton would be better off without marijuana stores at every corner. The Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario, known as the AGCO, told the public and members of the marijuana industry that they could apply for a license on December 17. Then, out of nowhere, the plan went up in smoke, and the government announced a lottery system on December 12. No warning, no notice, no explanation. Last week, we learned that 17,000 people have an interest in cannabis, in getting a license in Ontario. Yes, the province has created a quota of 25, but that's just for now. But if past behavior is any indication, we know that the province can change at any time and open the floodgates. I know some of you do not like me using the word, the term invasion, but we could get an invasion of pot stores, applications, with no warning, no notice, and with no explanation. If the province can press the stop button with no notice to the billion-dollar marijuana industry, then they could push the start button with no notice to cities like Brampton. Now, let me put that into context. There are 3,800 Tim Hortons restaurants in all of Canada, but 17,000-plus applications are at the gate waiting to get into the GTA in Ontario. Now, we have to decide, do we, as a council, trust Doug Ford government to protect us? Or do we trust our residents who are telling us to opt out and be cautious? I was elected to represent the residents of Ward seven and eight. My poll and conversations with thousands of other residents have shown me that the vast majority don't want marijuana stores on every block in Brampton, and I agree with them. I believe as a council, we can be a leader in the GTA and ask for other city councils in the GTA to join together and possibly negotiate a better plan than the one that is forced on us by the federal government and provincial government. I am proud to be standing up to Doug Ford and Justice Trudeau on this issue, because someone has to. By voting to opt out, we are saying not in my city, not in the GTA, and certainly not in the neighborhood. So I'm asking to amend Counselor Santos' motion to strike, I move to strike up the preamble and active clauses and replace it with the following. Whereas the city of Brampton held a telephone town hall meeting with over 8,000 active participants, and whereas the vast majority of Brampton residents participating in Brampton telephone town hall indicated that they want Brampton city council to opt out of retail cannabis sales. Whereas 17,000 people have indicated an interest in getting a cannabis retail license, and whereas the current quota of just 25 stores will likely be removed once the supply shortage, the shortage is addressed, and whereas the supply shortage is created by the taxation level that burdens licensed producers who sell to Ontario cannabis stores. And whereas cities like Brampton will be swamped with applications if the Ontario cannabis store is taxed, is removed. is taxes removed in the upcoming provincial budget, and whereas the provincial government may open the floodgates without notice, warning, or explanation, and allow an unlimited number of licenses to open in Brampton, and whereas Brampton residents will have little opportunity to fight against applications for cannabis stores in their neighborhood, because the licenses will be issued on an as-of-right basis like a liquor license. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Brampton opt out of the retail sale of cannabis, and that the city clerk be directed to communicate its decision to the appropriate provincial authorities, including the AGCO of Ontario, and further that the city invite the other GTA area municipalities that have opted out of retail cannabis sales to join in establishing a GTA cannabis working group comprised of two municipal councillors, members of council from each GTA council, and further that Brampton, that Brampton subcommittee be established to create a mandate of the GTA cannabis working group to be established, and the committee be comprised of the mayor and other members of Brampton council, and further that the mandate of the GTA cannabis working group be submitted to Brampton council for ratification at a future date, and that the primary function of the GTA cannabis working group be to lobby the provincial and federal governments to make changes to the cannabis legislation.
Thank you councillor Williams. We gave you a little bit of discretion there, like we did with councillor Dillon and councillor Santos. You are at two and a half minutes beyond your time, but I would just say that motion would be contrary, so it would not be viewed as an amendment as advised by the city clerk. Next up, we have councillor Singh.
Sure. So my question to staff is, how many, just I wanted you to reiterate, how many consultations were done, how many town halls were done? If you could just elaborate on that again.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. It initially started off with a scientifically valid telephone survey, 19 times out of 20 with a margin of error of 3.2%, where we had over 900 people participate. We had an online pulse poll of 3,000 participants. We had 768 people participate in the face-to-face intercept surveys at our community centers. We also received another 50 hard copy surveys from those individuals. We had 150 attend our town hall. We had another 8,000-plus people participate in the tele-town hall. We had 2,000 people, unique visits to our, 3,000 visits to our webpage and where to get information to that. As well, we had the information looping and streaming at all of our community facilities for people to absorb the information. And again, all the information we've collected was always posted on our website from our survey results, frequently asked questions. In addition, in support of the memo, the 300-plus emails we received at cannabis@brampton.ca, those are summarized and provided as part of the package as well. So we did receive that feedback.
Thank you. And how much staff time was allocated towards this consultation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We didn't fully account, but it's in the hundreds of hours.
Yeah, and during, and I heard, thought I heard you say weekends and...
It was weekends, it was early mornings, it was late evenings, it was through the holiday season, where people typically book time off. They took the time to do the work as well as participate in supporting these events. Our facility staff, our security staff, our communication staff as well.
Yeah. So for me, the good news story is the amount of effort that staff put in towards a consultation. I had the opportunity to attend some of the event. I was thoroughly impressed, and so I do thank staff, and I believe in the validity of the data, because when I look at Ward 9 to 10 in specific, it does match sort of what I've been hearing there. But I just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge the work of staff. I also wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge councillor Santos's motion as well. I appreciate your leadership in this motion and for incorporating some of the issues that people have on the other side. And I think that's good leadership. And so even if it passes, at least we will continue to advocate for some of the concerns, some of the concerns that I have as well, including we don't know how many more licenses might come out, the school distances, and other uncertainties, the lack of control and zoning issue. So I am leaning towards no. I appreciate the spirit. I'm not here to stigmatize anybody. I'm not here to use fear, just based on facts, and I really appreciate you bringing those facts into this motion so that the city can continue to advocate, and I just look forward to seeing what council decides. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Singh. Councillor Madero's wishing to speak for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do see that councillor Vicente hasn't spoke. I'd be more than happy to offer him the opportunity to speak first.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, just a couple of clarifications. I do appreciate the language used by my good friend councillor Dillon regarding selling our souls. I don't think I'm selling my soul. I think what we're doing here is making a responsible decision as leaders of a corporation. There was a question that he asked about, can we control the 25 licenses? My understanding through the, through the, Mr. Mayor, if you can clarify, so for the GTA region, we will have a total, in terms of Brampton, how much do we expect in terms of licenses at this stage?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, as of right now, theoretically, unlikely based on odds, the maximum number of licenses right now that Brampton could see would be six, because six are allocated to the GTA. That means any of those six who received that license through the lottery would all have to decide to open a pot store in Brampton. Or alternatively, we could see absolutely none. They could allocate and decide to open stores in other municipalities that did opt in, such as Ajax, which is part of that.
And through the, through Mr. Mayor, that's exactly the point. I guess I want to say it's market-driven. So if cannabis stores did not see that there was a market, they wouldn't come to Brampton. Alternatively, if they did see there was a large market and we'd attract more cannabis stores, that means that it's driven by consumers who look at that as a product and as business opportunities. And I think through Mr. Mayor, this type of decision, the business case, it's up to private investors or whoever opening up these businesses, if they think that there's profitability investing in the city of Brampton. I think just a second clarification. If we do not receive funds, if we opt out for some reason, we do not receive those funds, where do we think we will make up, I guess, the gap?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That gap, we would quantify that gap and submit it as part of our budget process for council's support and approval. And I presume that any of those additional costs for public health and Peel Regional Police, again, making the presumption, they would follow suit and put those submissions in as well, because the costs are there. The question is, are we going to get any funding to support those costs? And if no money is received, then the full burden would be asked upon the taxpayer.
And I guess through, through Mr. Mayor, I guess the relationship with the provincial government, it seems that my colleague has talked about leverage or sending a signal to the province. What leverage do we expect by us saying no? Do we think we would have leverage with the province? Is there any advantage that you would see in saying no, from, I guess, a technical perspective?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. From a technical perspective, I'm not sure that there's an advantage or disadvantage. My sense is this government would be more open to that kind of dialogue for those who would opt in technically versus opting out.
Through the chair, thank you.
Thank you councillor Madero, councillor Vicente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick look at the LCBO website, just for council's information. I just searched on their store locator, and in Brampton, the LCBO, with all of the demand for alcohol, they have nine stores. In Mississauga, they have 12 stores. And so I think that that's important for us to keep into context, the idea that there might be a wave of stores opening here in the city. I very highly doubt that that will happen. Question for the CAO. You outlined before all of the costs that we're going to have to pay as a result of cannabis being here. Do we have to deal with those costs regardless of whether or not we opt in or opt out?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The answer to that question is yes.
Okay. And another question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. There was a comment that we have no control over the locating of these stores. Now, in your previous presentations to council, you had mentioned that stores have to comply with city zoning, and they also have to comply with an application by the, through the AGCO, because they have established a process for a municipality to contest proposed locations. For the benefit of those who may not remember, or for folks who have not had the opportunity to listen to your presentation, can you explain those two very powerful controls that are in place?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The first control is these stores can only go in areas that are zoned retail, and they cannot be located in areas that are within 150 meters of any school. As the AGCO receives applications for permits or licenses for private retail stores, they must post a sign indicating that intent, and there's a 15-day period where our residents can respond and provide their comments to the AGCO on their concerns within three specific areas, one of which is around public safety, the other place is about access to children and youth, and the third one is public health and community safety. So we as a city would also, if we identify those concerns, much like some of the place, sensitive places of use that we had positioned a long time ago, we would put forth those concerns within those three buckets to the province with any submission that would be there. The AGCO would then take that information and then make a decision as to where that license, whether or not to approve that license.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So you mentioned signage. Where would that signage be and placed? And with regard to the concerns, how much say really do the municipalities have when they engage in that process? And what is the likelihood that the AGCO will listen to our concerns when we make those concerns known to them within that time period?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the applicant must post signage on the location where they intend to open the store, and number two, it would be posted on the AGCO website for people to look at and determine whether or not they want to provide commentary on. Whether or not the AGCO would listen to our concerns, I sure hope so. They've been very open to working with us to date. They have been mindful of our concerns and respect that constructive collaborative, co-creative dialogue moving forward. So my hope and expectation is that would continue, and despite that short window, we'll do what we can as a city, if we have concerns, to submit that information and hopefully listen.
And through you, Mr. Mayor. So for any store to sell cannabis, they would have to obtain the license from the AGCO and comply with all of their regulations, guidelines, requirements, and if they didn't do that, they might potentially lose their license. Would that be correct?
That is correct, and the manager of the store also needs to get a license and strict requirements to obtain that license, and they'll be inspected on a regular basis, and if they do not uphold to those requirements, they will definitely lose their license, as well as depending on the infraction, there could be significant penalties, fines, and jail time.
If I may indulge one more time, Mr. Mayor. Are these licenses in perpetuity, or must they be renewed on a regular basis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. They must be renewed every two years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Vicente. Councillor Dillon for a second time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted just firstly, I do apologize to councillor Madero, I did not mean it in any mean-spirited way when I said, "Sell your soul," even though it kind of does sound mean when you say it. So I do apologize. I simply just wanted to say that I don't think, I didn't speak on for or against marijuana. I just said that this is a bad deal that we got from the province, and more control needs to be within the municipality's hands, so I want to clarify that. And just, just a couple of points as well. Again, you know, there are facts you can get. One day I'll hear a story that coffee's good, one day I'll hear a story that coffee's not good. Milk's good, it's not good. There's different opinions, there's different studies done every day. But, you know, a quick search for articles in the, in the past few months, it says, "Colorado Governor Won't Rule Out Banning Marijuana Again." Just speaking to the health benefits. CBC, Canadian Broadcasting Corporation, there's been a spike in the cannabis overdoses based on, based on edibles. You know, despite some popular perceptions, marijuana is not a risk-free drug. Edibles, in particular, pose a threat to users, and so if people consume marijuana, it's none of my business, because it's legal. But we want to make sure that, as a municipality, in my opinion, our first and foremost responsibility is to protect our residents. We've got to make sure our residents are safe, and we feel, or I feel rather, that if the province, that the province shouldn't, should have given us more controls, you know, to allow, you know, where we choose to sell these products. And so those are my final comments. I think we've had a good discussion today. I also want to thank councillor Santos as well. You know, we obviously disagreed upon this, this issue. It's been a spirited debate, but whatever happens, I do hope that this council does make the best decision for the best interests of the residents of Brampton.
Thank you councillor Dillon, and for your collegial words. Councillor Paleshi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the residents that have come out tonight. This has been a very difficult decision for members of council. Going back to when we first found out that we did have to make a decision, I also had a knee-jerk reaction. My knee-jerk reaction was to opt in. I saw dollar signs. I saw all of these, you know, potential for tax revenue and all, like the offspring of everything that was going to come from this. This was going to be, it was going to be fantastic. We were going to, we were going to have a 0% increase to the tax base. That's all was going through my mind. Little did I know that it was, it was a bad deal. The province kind of stuck us with something that has, has never happened to, I think, any other municipality before, and it was, it was really unfortunate that we weren't going to have a decision on where these stores were going to go in the city of Brampton. And, and, and that was a big deal. That was a big deal for me to, I spoke previously, previous council, I wanted the 500 meters. Ford, I think, went out to the public to say he was going to, he was supporting 400 meters, and we wanted 500 meters. It was, it was, it was a mess. As I talked to residents and heard from some of the correspondents that were coming in, I've heard, I've had more correspondence on this issue than any other issue, including the LRT. And to be completely honest, it's been really up in the air. It's been a 50-50 split for the yes side and the no side. And in talking to, I was on the phone all day today, just getting some feedbacks from some of my, some of my constituents in the area, and, and for the most part, they respected any decision that council was going to make here today. here today. I think you've heard from six members of council so far today voicing their, voicing their opinion on, on support of the motion. So regardless of my decision, it's going to, it's going to go through. But I at least owe members of the public the rationale behind why I'm going to make my decision. And when it comes down to it, I'm a father of three children. And I think I am a good father. And my, my family life comes before politics. The politician would come, would come second in my decision-making process. And I think that my children, all under the age of 12, I think that I've been able to give them the tools so far and will continue to, to have them succeed in life. And I have a, I have a good wife and a good mother to those children. And we will continue to try and provide the best advice that we can for our children. I don't believe a store is going to change the fact that it may entice them in any way whatsoever, store or stores. And as I'm, as I'm going through the day and really thinking about the kids and the opportunity that, that we do have for the city of Brampton, when it comes down to it is if this, if allowing a store here today even puts a dent in the black market, then I'm for it. If it puts a dent in what is out near the schools, at our recreation facilities, regardless of our land use planning ability here in the city of Brampton, then I'm for it. I think that we as a municipality need to come in, come up with some pretty innovative ways to prohibit marijuana from being close to schools, places of worship, parks, and whatnot. And I think we can do that either here at the city of Brampton or at the region of Peel. I think we do have that ability. The province has turned to us to say, "This is what you have to do and you don't have any say in, in, in what's happening with it." And we need to really come together with our neighbors to the south and the north and think of ways where we can stop, stop it being in the schools and at our rec centers. And it's a, it's going to be a competitive market. And competition will dictate where the dealers of this stuff go to our vulnerable children. But we need to be community leaders. And this is leading the way. Our decision here today is not legalize marijuana. Our decision here today is to allow the stores to open up. And if the stores open up and it puts one dent in the black market, then I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pulashy. Moving on, Councilor Williams, second time.
Has Willans spoken already? Would he like to go first?
No.
Yeah. I can't, I can't hear you. You know, I, I thank you through you, Mayor. I, I have a lot of experience in this, in the mental health field, working with young people. So, I'm just, it concerns me because I've been on the other side. I have been working with organizations where I've gone to homes where parents are at their wits' end because their, their child is smoking way too much pot. And I'm there with the parent, waking the child up in the morning to get to school. I've been consoling parents who have had their kids apprehended because of drug use. I've been in situations where I am following a child, a youth and in doing counseling sessions and working with the families to try and, and deal with their trauma and all of that associated with the drug and addictions used in the families. It's a scary, scary place to be. And knowing that we are in a position to put some safeguards around our communities, because let's face it, Brampton has communities that are very low income, that are, have low social economic status, that are struggling as it is. So, I, I think we need to be very mindful of what we're agreeing to. And have we consulted mental health organizations around this? Have we done our due diligence in that area? Because we know, we have a hallway medicine issue already where we know with the Coast Program, they're strapped and police officers are inside emergency rooms right when they could be on the streets doing policing because of mental health and addiction. So have we really looked at the impact that this can have socially on our communities? So, I just have a couple questions. So, is it true that the supply problem, this is through you, Mayor, to the chair, to C A O, is it true that the supply problem is only in Ontario because the Ontario cannabis stores taxes, supplies are too high and the rate, and the licensed products are, I'm sorry, I'm jumbling on my words, and the licensed producers are selling in other provinces? And because of the low supply, medicinal users are not getting what they need? Is that related?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I will attempt to answer the entirety of the question. The shortage is nationwide. So, there are difficulties with the supply and the selling of cannabis pro, recreational cannabis products across the country. Some, some provinces were quicker out of the gate than Ontario. Ontario was in a position to say, "Well, recognizing that supply issue, this is how we're going to limit the rollout of the stores."
So, I know that this, it, there is the medicinal side of it. And, you know, we've heard from many people that they wanted retail rec stores to address their need for medicinal cannabis. Has staff addressed the lack of medicinal supply anywhere in any of the discussions that we've had and reports?
Through you, Chair. I would appreciate if you could repeat the question.
Yeah. Has, have we addressed the lack of medicinal supply in this debate? And has staff seeked out information to determine the ratio between recreational users and medicinal users?
Through you, Chair. Our understanding is the supply problem is to both. Did we directly go out on the medicinal side? No. It was more about obtaining feedback from our residents and your constituents to determine whether or not, you know, they supported opt-in versus opt-out.
Well, I'm wondering if Councilor Santos, I know we had, I had mentioned this at the last meeting to address the concerns that medicinal users have. And so, I'm wondering if we'd be open to a friendly amendment again to work on advocating for medicinal users in the form of creating a medicinal, a cannabis advisory group who will make special recommendations to council to ratify and advocating for changes to the medicinal cannabis regime.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I'm not exactly sure if forming an advisory committee at the municipal level to inform or come up with strategies for medicinal cannabis being sold in Brampton is within our jurisdiction. So, I refer that back for us to figure out. But I do support advocating on behalf of medicinal users in Brampton, for sure. So, if you would consider that instead of forming an advisory committee, I'm fine with just advocating on behalf of medicinal users in Brampton.
The, the train of thought around a committee is to really get a good sense of what is driving the concerns that medicinal users have so that we can effectively express their concerns at a level to provincial and federal governments, or the MPs, the M P Ps, so that we're just making sure that we're really hearing them clearly.
I just caution the councillors, we are beyond the allocated time on the second speaking spot. So, if you could, Councilor Santos, accept or object, sorry?
To advocate?
Advocate. Okay. So, we'll take that as a friendly amendment. Councilor Willans for the first time.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to the acting C A O. Joe, just quickly, we thank you for all the delegates that came in and thank you to the fellow councillors. But just quickly, Joe, the, on the cost on policing, again, let's go to the high side, $9 million. That would be split between Mississauga, Brampton, and, well, not Peel Region because Peel Region would be, or Callan would be O P P. But that includes the O P P as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That $9 million, again, based on a formula created by F C M, which is not necessarily accurate to our specific uniqueness as a region. However, that $9 million was Peel Regional Police and O P P for Callan.
Okay. So, if we take that, well, that even gets better than the numbers in favor for us if we opt in because if you have Callan and Mississauga opting out, that $9 million will still be their share. Because even though they've opted out, they're still responsible for the policing on that. So, then the administration costs that come forward, let's take the high side on that, that we're getting from them is 3.25 million. So, it's under a million when you look at it that way. So, okay. Just wanted to get that clear. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Willans. Councilor Bowman for a second time.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, Joe, you keep, you keep mentioning and we keep mentioning that there's a shortage in Canada of cannabis. Is there a shortage of all cannabis or is there a shortage of the cannabis that is going to be certified and protected and sold in the stores?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The shortage is for all legally-produced marijuana, medical, medicinal, and recreational.
So, the shortage is not for pot that you can buy on the street or get from wherever you might normally get it. The shortage is, I guess, for lack of a better term, the good stuff, the good marijuana. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be funny about that, but...
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, that answer is absolutely correct. It's the legally-controlled, quality-controlled product that is by licensed producers by Health Canada to produce the product.
Okay. So, in effect, people who are going to be buying cannabis from retail stores, in effect, we are protecting the residents and the citizens from stuff that might be mixed in, fentanyl, whatever, by having the certified marijuana available through a store.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The answer to that is correct because it is strictly controlled by requirements through Health Canada.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilor Willans for a second time.
Just very quickly, Joe, you mentioned Ajax falls under the Greater Toronto Area. Does Burlington fall under Hamilton or Greater Toronto Area? Because Burlington opted in. So, I'm just looking at the percentage of stores.
Through the chair, they are part of the G T A.
So, they would fall under the Greater Toronto Area. Okay. Because I know that they opted in. I know Hamilton's opting in as well. Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, I reserve my comments for last. I want to thank everyone that participated in this discussion. The best democracy is one that's spirited. And I know some people might have raised a few eyebrows over how passionate Councilor Williams was, but I think it's good. I think it's good when we challenge each other. It results in a, in a, in a better decision. And I think Councilor Dillon said it appropriately. You know, he respected the mover of the motions, the thought that she put into, the research she put into that motion despite the fact he may have a different perspective. The beauty of this council is I think we really appreciate what each other says, the research we put into it. And I want to thank the city of Brampton. The public engagement was remarkable. The feedback we've had on all our social media platforms shows this is a city that cares about the civic decisions. The fact that we had 8,000 people participate in a telephone town hall, the fact that we had City Hall packed for our public town hall. I came into this debate leaning towards opting out. I have never used cannabis, have no intention of ever using cannabis. Coming from a conservative background, you're probably not surprised that my immediate inclination would have been to opt out. But I listened. I listened to the feedback we got. I had to remind myself the context of this decision. This is not a debate over legalization. This is a debate whether to allow a retail store in Brampton where police funding would be tied to that retail store. When I asked staff, I asked police if the cost would change, if we opted in or opted out, it doesn't. It doesn't, the costs don't change. Whether you like it or you don't, cannabis is in our community. And I, I wish, you know, you look at the Health Canada, that it says under 25, you should not be using cannabis. I hope young people, you know, take guidance from the Health Canada recommendations. But the reality is, it's in our community. There's a stat, there's shared, but usage in high schools that I found alarming. And that's when there's no retail stores here. It's here. And now, not only is it here through black market dispensaries, you can purchase it online. Legally, you can purchase it. It will come to your home. Cannabis is here whether we opt in or opt out. My primary concern as mayor of this city is to make sure we keep the city safe. So, that's why I have a few concerns about, about opting out. The police funding, we lose. And you're right, it's a bad deal by the province. I think they have been frankly greedy at benefiting from all the revenue and not sharing it with municipalities. 15%, 15, covering 15% of the police costs. They're telling municipalities, "You find another way to pay for drug-impaired driving." And I understand, most citizens will be responsible. I believe 99% of residents will be responsible. But if there is some idiot out there that drives drug impaired, I want to make an example of them. It can't be tolerated. And to tell municipalities that you have two choices, don't have zero tolerance on drug-impaired driving or raise your property taxes, that's an unfair choice to put on municipalities by not offering 100% funding, by the provincial government not offering 100% funding. And maybe the provincial government's not getting enough funding from the federal government. But either way, they're just, they're, they're, they're taking this, this mess and giving it to municipalities and saying, "You find a way to pay for it," the one level of government that has the least resources. What are we expected to say? We're not going to enforce another type of crime? That's not the way we maintain public safety. At the end of the day, though, partial funding, partial funding to keep our community safe is better than no funding. End of the day, partial funding gives us a little bit more resources to protect the safety of our streets and the safety of our young people. That's why this has been a really difficult decision. You look at the black market dispensaries, I understand from initial research that in communities that have opted out, there's been an increase in black market dispensaries. That's already happened in adjacent municipalities, not to point them out, but that's already happened in a nearby municipality that opted out. More black market dispensaries only benefits the criminal industries that run them. I don't want to prop up a criminal industry. That's against our inherent goals for public safety. Further to that, if someone is going to support, if someone is going to use cannabis, I prefer they do it at a legal store. You go into a black market dispensary, it could be laced with a more dangerous product. At the end of the day, we've been given a choice by other levels of government. And the choice isn't perfect, but we need to make the best decision. I want to commend Councilor Santos for her suggestion last week that we reach out to MPs and M P Ps. They're the ones that created this legislation. And the legislation says if we don't specifically say we're opting out, then it's assumed we opt in. We, we use the same language with MPs and M P Ps that put us in this predicament. And not a single MP or M P would say on the record that they want us to opt out. Why? Because it's the same, it's the same assumption. Because it's the same, it's the same assumption. Better to take partial funding than no funding, better to have residents use legal cannabis than black market cannabis. And, you know, it wasn't an easy decision, but I think councillor Santos's motion is the responsible path for our city, and I also believe, I also believe that we're going to need to do some advocacy, just like we have in other topics, just like we do in healthcare, and go transit, and education, we're going to have to do some advocacy and join with all municipalities to say, this is not the way municipalities should be treated. Now, I'm only going to speak once, because I know I use my time, more than, more than my time allocated, I need to be, I'm up at seven minutes, so I think I've expressed my comments clearly, and I'll be supporting councillor Santos's motion. Before I call the question, councillor Paleshi with a quick comment.
You spoke, you can't call the question. I'd like to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Santos, I'm going to request that we split it up a little bit, and that's for voting purposes. I'm going to ask that we vote on item one and item three, because those are the only two items that reference us opting in. The remaining items, two, four, five, six, A, B, and seven, are all about advocacy. And I think no member has talked against advocacy here today. So voting for those items are only requesting that we continue working, working the relationship and get a better deal for Brampton. So that's why I'm asking for those items to be separated. One and three, recorded vote was called, and then the remaining.
I think that's a fair request. Councillor Santos, are you agreeable to that?
I think so.
Okay. Clerk is okay with that?
The mayor is okay with that. I want to confirm what I said.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, then, the request is to take a separate vote on clauses one and three, together, I presume, and then a separate vote can be taken on the balance of the clauses.
Okay.
One and three are the operative positions of council, yes.
Good. Okay, so we can call the question? Recorded vote?
Can you, so we're going to be taking two votes, and I believe one and three are first, and then the rest are second. And so I think I agree with what councillor Paleshi says, I just want to just reiterate it one more time.
Sorry, sorry, councillor, through you, Mr. Mayor, under council's procedural rules, you've spoken twice, and we're ready to vote.
May I perhaps permission to speak 30 seconds?
Indulgence of council?
Just to clarify, just want to reiterate, clarify. So the first vote is, number one and three is if you're against, you want to opt in, or if you're for opting in, opting in or opting out essentially. And so the rest of the votes are for advocacy, whether it's for, sorry, whether it's to the provincial government and other areas as well. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear with that when they see council vote.
Okay.
Just want to make sure, man.
Okay, recorded vote.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, recorded vote's been requested on clauses one and three only. All in favor of those two clauses, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is councillor Santos, councillor Visante, councillor Willans, councillor Paleshi, councillor Bowman, Mayor Brown, councillor Maderos, councillor Fortini. All opposed to those two clauses, please stand to be counted. Showing opposed is councillor Williams, councillor Singh, councillor Dylan. Mr. Mayor, the clauses one and three carry eight to three. The second recorded vote is on the balance of the motions, which are clauses two, four, five, six, seven, and eight. All in favor of those motions, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor is councillor Santos, councillor Visante, councillor Willans, councillor Paleshi, councillor Bowman, Mayor Brown, councillor Maderos, councillor Williams, councillor Fortini, councillor Singh, councillor Dylan. Mr. Mayor, the balance of those motions carry unanimously 11 to 0.
Black Lives Matter, we need to do one more day of it, and defeat its history by making another Black Lives Matter in Brampton. It's the most political, conscious order, unfortunate.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, council, for that spirited discussion. We have the, council, we have a staff report, item 4.1 before us, the report was referred to a special meeting for consideration this evening. We also have item 4.2 on our agenda, which is update information provided to staff through our CEO regarding the city's consultations on these questions, as well as other new information since council last debated the matter in December. We also have related business items, 6.1, two motions introduced at the committee of council meeting on January 16th are referred to in the special meeting, that regardless of its decision that the city continue to advocate to both provincial and federal governments for its share of revenue to offset all costs associated, the city, regional appeal, Peel Regional Police due to the federal government's decision to legalize cannabis, that regardless of its decision that the city, along with other municipalities, continues to advocate to the provincial government for a greater voice in determining where licensed stores can be located, especially in proximity to sensitive land uses, as well as a number of pieces of correspondence we can consider at the time and receive at the end of the debate.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so all of those pieces of correspondence are the next series of the four or five motions, and they're all for receipt, so they could be taken individually as moved by the mover and seconder, or taken as a package.
Okay, so the first, take them as a package, all those in favor? Okay. Motion carrying? Okay, so councillor Bowman has a question on that?
No. Through you, Mr. Mayor, we're just, we're just taking, for Mr. Clerk, item 4.1.1, we're just receiving the report, because similar recommendations were made in the report as to what we just passed. So we're not taking the recommendations from 4.1.1, we're just receiving the report.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The only recommendation from the staff report was clause seven, which was taken as a friendly amendment to councillor Santos's motion.
Thank you. The next item is the public question period. Now, we can deal with that, and item seven, public question, this is where we invite members of the public to come forward to the podium, ask any questions about any decision made at the council meeting today. There is a 15-minute time limit to the entirety of this question and answer period. So if you have any question, please come forward, state your name for the meeting and record, for the record, and your question succinctly related to one of the council's decisions made at today's meeting.
It's been a long road. I understand everyone's positions on the yeas and the nays. I would like to thank council for putting Brampton first. Thank you.
It does have to be in the form of a question, but... Seeing no other questions? Oh, we have a question here?
If I can buy it on the street for half the price... Why would I buy it through a store?
The, I'm going to let the CEO answer that, but I understand the price is set by the provincial government, is it, or the federal government?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the price is set by the federal government.
Yeah, and we...
Yes, I know it's set by the federal government, but the people that sell it on the black market, they don't have any price set. You'll be able to buy it for half the price, the kids are still going to buy it on the street, because they can't afford to buy the top. Guys like me, if I was doing marijuana, or whatever, I can pay, I can pay the full price and get it through the store. My name's John Salter, I live in Brampton, I've lived there for over 50 years. I think it's sad that we're going to have marijuana. It's not going to take it away, the kids are still going to get it for half the price. The police are going to have twice as much work to do. That's my opinion.
Okay, I think that's more of a comment, but thank you for the feedback. Any other questions that come up to the podium?
Thank you. My name is Aki Oduto. I signed the council for the decision, but my question is, does the retail store eliminate or reduce illegality in the city of Brampton, or even in Canada in general? Does it take care of unseen driving or behavioral activities in the lives of whosoever is taking it? Does that take care of it? And if, the question is, why are we putting economic value over the values of lives? Thank you.
So I, just to respond to the question, we have, by opting in, we have funding to enforce drug impaired driving. There's no funding available if we don't opt in, but the cannabis will still be in the community. I think that would be a succinct way to answer your question. The funding available to enforce drug impaired driving, although not as much as we need, we do get partial funding for that. I, it's one of the reasons that I can tell you I support the motion, is I want to have zero tolerance on drug impaired driving. I want to treat it as seriously as we do drunk driving. So if you have a question, please come to the mic.
I just want to ask council if they've noticed any difference since marijuana's been legal since October 17th, because I haven't. It's just been another day. There hasn't been people outrunning in the streets and promoting, going, hey, look at me, I can smoke legally now. I think there's just a lot of fear in that, that comes from the unknown, maybe from ignorance. I'm just wondering, has anybody noticed any difference?
One more shootings.
What?
One more shootings.
Or these pot parties that we were going to have in our next-door neighbors? I haven't seen any of that happen. Just a question.
Yes.
Through, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, in attempt to respond to the last question, we have seen minimal calls coming into 311 and to our by-law enforcement team in relation to any noxious complaints, and I know our Peel Regional Police have been very active and attempting to, and have been successful in shutting down the illegal pot dispensaries as well. But it has not been a significant increase in calls, crimes, that have impacted us.
Yes.
Greetings, Your worship. I commend Ms. Santos and Ms. Williams for the passion that they show towards our city and what they would like to see Brampton looks like. However, now that we are opting, my concern is in regards to the, as you know, violence are being escalating within our GTA, in our cities, in our communities. So with that said and done, what is Brampton planning to do? As you can see, already, it's growing, and there are some areas, we do not have enough police stations to cover the areas. So what are we planning on doing when you know this is, these are the same things that will escalate violence within our communities, stores been broken into, because there are people out there who want it, youth out there who want it, and maybe they cannot afford it. So how are we planning to make police, and more police station available within the city of Brampton? And with the funding that we already have and don't have?
So, yes, councillor Visante, you should answer that?
Put me up. Just to address the question. This entire council wants to elevate the safety conversation here in this city. That is why, at the beginning of this term, we moved for us to establish a safety committee, first of all. Second, at the regional level, we are also committed to elevating safety throughout all of the region appeal, and that is why, currently in our budget deliberations, we are allocating enough money to hire an additional 55 police officers across all appeal, and these officers are to be positioned in the areas of the city that are in the most need. So I just want to reinforce that we all want to see a safer community, and we are putting our efforts and the funding behind making Brampton safer.
But, of course, yes, hiring more police officers is one thing, but what I'm saying is the lack of availability of stations within certain areas, and now that we are growing, spreading out more, so what about having more stations available?
So we appreciate the question, but I'm told under the procedural bylaws, there's no debate, it's a question, it's restricted to a question?
Question, yes. So that was my question.
That's our answer.
I guess.
Okay, is there an additional, any additional questions?
Please, maybe two. When Neil McCarthy, on behalf of his eminence, the Archbishop of Toronto, sent the letter, he requested specifically that it be read aloud to the gallery and the assembly here tonight. That was not done, to my knowledge, and I'm wondering why.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the person speaking. We make the letters public, and just in the interest of an efficient and effective meeting. In previous terms of council years ago, all correspondence would be read out. That's not a way to have an effective and efficient meeting at this point. It is part of the meeting record, all members of council received the letter, and it is a matter of the public record, and it is posted, it will be posted online in the morning, along with all other correspondence for this meeting.
Second question. On the 5th of December, all of you were here, many of these people were here, and at that time councillor Santos publicly said, stated, that she had invited to her home a paid cannabis retail lobbyist, and that that person, as I recall, had convinced her that cannabis wasn't, quotes, "all that bad." And I'm wondering if, based on that, the motion was put forward this evening. Was she censured for doing that? It wouldn't seem a reasonable thing for a councillor to do, to invite to her home a paid cannabis, cannabis retail person.
I'll let councillor Santos respond to, if she wants to.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I'm not exactly sure where you've received that information, but I can very much so confirm that that did not happen.
I thought, in your own words, you told us that evening that you had done that, and that the person had convinced you that cannabis wasn't all that bad.
So councillor Santos has said that did not happen, so thank you for clarifying the record. Are there any additional questions?
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you for the public, our next item of business is item nine, confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by councillor Santos and councillor Paleshi to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries. Our last item of business is item 10, adjournment. Thank you, members, for a respectful debate this evening. Thank you to all, thank you to staff for being here late on a Monday night, and for all your work on this file. Our next city council meeting is Wednesday, January 23rd, and then February 6th at 9:30 in the morning. I have a motion by councillor Dylan and councillor Singh to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Motion carries.